You can talk on any subject. We don't have any public hearings tonight to talk about, so you can talk on any subject. You just have three minutes. Please state your name and your address and Ms. Nichols will give you instructions here. So do we have anybody wishing to speak?
I'd like to speak. This is Jeannie Lindsay.
All right.
Six thirty-nine Anglesey Court.
You you got her. Everybody can everybody hear Jeannie?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Hello. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, as you know, I'm against the idea of inviting more high-density projects into our small town. The town of Stallings has already approved thousands more residential units recently while we have limited school capacity, limited road capacity, limited water and sewer, and limited fire and police services. We have too much residential and not enough commercial real estate, leaving a tax burden on the residents. High-density projects are only continuing to tip that balance in the wrong direction and cost us more in services than they will bring in in taxes. The same school capacity numbers have been used over and over again for the past half dozen projects without consideration for what the collective impact of those projects is going to be. At this point, our county is becoming too dense for comfort in every direction and on every drive. We can see clear-cut land with no end in sight and no regard for sustainable or responsible growth. And in the current pandemic, people are flocking away from high density and into single-family homes. With the number of high-density units being built in Stallings and on our borders, how long before those units are going to start losing their value? Obviously, there's a high demand for new homes in our area, as there has been for decades here in the beautiful Carolinas. And what's the endpoint to the unsustainable growth? And who's going to say enough is enough? How many? How are we going to have any new schools or new businesses or new amenities added to our town in the coming decades or generations if we overdevelop all the land? Everything that the Stinton Farms project is offering our town is already in existence or planned right across the street. None of it was asked for or needed by the residents. Stallings, a buffer and a row of trees and a less horrible number of apartment and townhome buildings are not awesome negotiation wins. They're really not wins at all in terms of what's good for Stallings and for Union County as a whole. With this being the largest and nicest remaining amount of acreage in our small town, please keep working to find a vision that is beneficial to the town. The taxes and the property values are conveniently measurable, but they aren't nearly representative of our quality of life. Protecting existing neighborhoods needs to include protecting school quality, commute time, sense of community, noise and air pollution levels, and environmental function and beauty. And I especially appreciate each of those priceless measures because I really miss them dearly when I moved from South Carolina to Baltimore and experienced the ill effects of overcrowding. It's heartbreaking to see our region in a race to the goal of overcrowding. Rotary International has a guide for making sound decisions. They call the four-way test of the things we think, say, and do. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned? And the Stinton Farm project in this area of this town does not pass that four-way test. Thanks so much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. All right. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's. Oh, well.
All right, hold up. Who is this?
My name's Gina Burke. I'm willing to speak. I know there's some other.
No, go ahead, Ms. Burke. Just tell us your address.
I am on Anglesey Court in Shanamara. And I just want, I agree with the what Jeannie just presented. I wanted to just say that I voiced my concern too, that I want the board to be able to hear that the residents keep saying we're concerned about our schools and we're concerned about overcrowding in our streets. We're concerned about our property values. And I, for one, moved here about four years ago. We came here because of the schools. And ironically, because of the overcrowding issue, we actually don't have our kids in Stallings Elementary at this point. I'm concerned about other things that are affecting us negatively and for us, Anglesey, I'm concerned about the type of development going in behind us. I don't think we need more apartments. I think it'll negatively affect our neighborhood. I would hate to be at the point where we would have to move out of this really wonderful place that we have because of what's not the vision that we thought this town had originally. So I just encourage the board to to stay with the vision of keeping this a community where we do preserve what we already have. And even though I understand Stinson Farms is a development that's going to come in some capacity, I just highly encourage it to not be townhomes and apartments. And maybe just look for some other solutions. So that was my thoughts.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Burke. Anybody else?
Yes. Greg Pillar, six-three-four Rose Korea Court in Shanamara. Just wanted to echo both what Jeannie and the previous resident has stated. Jeannie put it very eloquently and succinctly in terms of the impact that this additional high residential development would have on the community. Where we live in particular, our property would butt up against about five other properties in this new development. And even, I mean, with that impact aside, there's a lot of other aspects that this would impact the community in Stallings. You know, as was mentioned, and as an environmental scientist speaking to the fact that the significant reduction in the tree population due to this development, the impact on water resources, the impact on the sewer resources, traffic in the area would provide a lot of damage, not only in terms of aesthetics, in terms of quality of life for residents in the area, but also no doubt an impact on the environment that would continue to move in a direction that I think is opposite what City of Stallings has put out in terms of its strategic plan. As has been noted, the residents continue to oppose and object with solid reasons, the development. And so again, I would echo that, that this is something that's that we find highly concerning. And would definitely, you know, part of the reason why we moved to the area was the aesthetic was the vision of the town. And this would potentially, you know, cause us to consider relocating to something that in terms of why we moved here to begin with. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Greg, how do you spell your last name?
P I L L A R.
P I L L A R? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else? Anybody else? I got Melissa McCartney on my screen.
Sorry, that was. It's Greg Pillar and Melissa McCartney.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you all for providing your comments. Thank you very much. Next up is our consent agenda. Does anybody have any additions or deletions to or want to change any of the amendments? I mean, any of the minutes? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion. I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right. Motion by Mr. Shaw.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Paxton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it in favor of the consent agenda. All right. Next up is reports. As y'all know, I've been trying to get a hotel tax for quite a few years. And finally, Dean has called me back, Dean Art, our state representative, House representative. And so now we're playing phone tag, but I don't know if he's reached out to you, David, but Stephen, I appreciate your offer for help, but we just got to, you know, hear what he has to say, what committee it's in and basically what excuse they have for me now. But so just want to give you all that update that we'll keep trying. All right. Report from council members. We'll go down District One. John?
Just real quick, the Union County Comprehensive Plan twenty fifty was resubmitted out to the public for additional public comments, got quite a few additional comments, and it's now being recompiled and going out to the committees again. And I would encourage folks to take a look at that as it does lay out the priorities for schools, traffic infrastructure and sewer and water. So other item of interest is the Aqua Plant over in Country Woods East, between Country Woods East and Golden Acres has been an ongoing kind of source of concern for those residents' quality of life for years. Thanks to the work of our great Code Enforcement Officer Colleen, finally got some traction with the date. And I finally got Dean Art to pay some attention to it. And it's now sitting at the executive level with Aqua. And hopefully we'll we'll get some movement on them cleaning up their act over there. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. District Two, David?
Nothing to report this time around.
All right. District Three, Linda?
A couple of things. As you all know, I have served as the delegate to the CARPO Board for the last several years. And I'm honored to have been reelected as the Vice Chair of the Board for the coming year. It is a one-year term and I'll be serving until December of twenty twenty-one. And Alex probably will include in his report, but we have been seeking the support from the CARPO leadership and TCC leadership to address our concerns with the widening of Idowild Road to six lanes. So I'll let Alex give a little more detail about that. But I'm optimistic that we might get some traction with that finally. And that's my report.
All right. Well, congratulations, Linda. Thank you for serving Stallings. All right. District Four, Heather Groves?
No report.
All right. District Five, Stephen Ayers?
Hey, the only thing I have is an update from the Western Union Municipal Alliance. And I know last time we talked about how we wanted to proceed if they had a request for us. I will tell you that I guess the rest of the towns preferred a different alternative. And so I'll send out an email to you, Alex, and to you, Wyatt, to kind of propose what they would like to see done for that group. And as far as that group is concerned, one of the things that they're going to be working on here soon is the donut holes and getting those donut holes in front of the Union County Development Group. And kind of working through how that fits into or how that might modify the Union County twenty fifty plan. And again, this is a big effort for the other members of the Western Union Municipal Alliance. Not, we're not impacted quite as bad as they are or on the level that they are. So it might not be as big an effort for us. But I'll work with Lynn and Alex to kind of put together the the data that we're looking forward to go to the Union County Development Group. And that's really all I have for my side.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. District Six, Brad Richardson? Oh, he's he's at a church meeting and he's going to be joining us about seven forty-five. All righty. Next up, a report from our town manager.
Done. And I apologize to everyone for sounding like the Cookie Monster tonight. I've got two items to mention tonight, and then I believe Ms. Platts, our Parks and Rec Director, has an item as well as Chief Franks. The first item, Mayor Pro Tim Paxton, that was an excellent segue. As everyone knows, for the past several years, the town and NCDOT have been engaged in an ongoing dialogue regarding U four nine one three, which is the Idowild Road Widening Project. We've been unable to reach a mutually agreeable design. And so the Stallings Town Council has tasked Mayor Pro Tim Paxton, as well as myself and staff, with engaging with CARPO leadership and staff to discuss the options that we had previously presented to the board and the pros and cons to verify those options and just to see what our next steps might be. At the risk of over simplification for this issue, let me give a brief summary. NCDOT indicates that they're bound by their purpose and their need for their level of service for that area to be a certain threshold. And while the council agrees that there needs to be some work done to accommodate future growth, the council always also has stated that they're unhappy with the sheer number of lanes that are being added as well as the lack of access with certain sections. The council's concern is really that the project becomes an ever-expanding highway that will cut off parts of the community and provide less access and be destructive of the community feel of that the council is hoping to achieve. So our board feels that level of service is an important consideration, but it shouldn't be the only consideration. And so DOT, I think, is looking for an answer. Some money has come up. You know, their cash levels are rising a little bit. And so they're able to reengage and start design, which is important while we start the engagement with CARPO leadership and verify options. So the plan is to meet with them. The first available time was early March. We're going to do that and we'll report back to the council and kind of where we stand after that. Any questions on the Idowild Road project before I move on to the next item? Okay. Second item is the downtown streetscape. As you all know, one of the top priorities for the board is creating a downtown area. And a part of the action plan that the committee has come up with has been looking at the downtown streetscape. And so one of the things we're interested in exploring is the cost of burying our utility lines underground. On one hand, it really makes it look a lot better. On the other hand, it's very expensive. Whatever number you think it might be, as a good rule of thumb, just multiply it by three and four, and that should be about right. And with that being said, you'll notice we don't have the town attorney here with us tonight. The mayor and I discussed, and we felt like it wasn't needed just from a cost-saving standpoint. Mr. McCauley will be here for to cover the the the, excuse me, the extensive farms segment. And then also the rest of the agenda is mostly reports and other issues. And at the same time, the purchasing of property, and that's already been discussed with Ms. Cox, and we have a good idea of what we need to do moving forward. So that's all I've got. I wanted to mention that to you as well. Any questions or concerns with any of those items?
So we're not going forward with burying the lines? Is that what I?
I'm sorry. I wasn't clear. We are getting a cost estimate of that.
Okay. The way you made, the way I heard it is, is that we decided not to go forward with that. Okay. Thanks, man.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify, Councilmember Ayers. You're correct. We're, I want to get the cost estimate, and I'll bring that to the council. And as we go forward with our streetscape design, the board can decide if it's something you want to do or at the same time, if we want to hold off and not do it because that'll determine how we proceed with the engineering of the streetscape design.
Gotcha. What, is there any synergies there as far as? I mean, I'm assuming that because you would have to have the, you would have to have the like do power would do the line change and a different construction company would come in and do the the cityscape. There's no synergy. There would be two different groups doing the work. Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
All righty. Thanks, Alex. So you want to call him Ms. Pips?
Please, Ms. Platts?
Platts.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm on headphones tonight, so just wanted to be sure. I'm here with an update on the Blair Mill Greenway project. The last time we met, we were still awaiting information from the Vickery HOA on their vote for the easement agreement that council previously directed us to pursue. And I am proud to say today that that was approved with at least eighty percent of the homeowners voting in favor of the easement agreement, which is currently in process and on its way to Ms. Cox for review. With that being said, we should be positioned as possibly as early as the next council meeting to bring you an update with our consultant, Eric Woolridge, and to discuss the next steps that will take us into the bidding process. Just wanted to touch base with you tonight and let you know this is where we are, and we're continuing to move forward on the project.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. Any questions for Ashley?
Good job.
All righty. Next up, Chief Franks?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the past year, the Police Department has been working on becoming a intoxicilizer site, which for those that don't know, that's the instrument we use to test impaired drivers. We were notified last week that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services will be installing, be installing our intoxicilizer tomorrow. What this does, this makes us the only testing site on the western side of Union County, so it will help our officers in their enforcement of impaired driving and surrounding communities be able to utilize our facility as well. In essence, this can save our folks' time and from driving down to Monroe and taking care of our enforcement efforts. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Now, when we had to go to Monroe, did they charge us to use their facility?
No, no charge. It's just really time that is consumed that's valuable when you're trying to test for that impairment.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief on this subject?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say that I appreciate the Alex and the chief. I know that they've had some interesting situations over the last month and just appreciate that their communication and their their handling of those items.
All right. Thanks, Stephen. Any other department on tonight that's not on the agenda? Alex?
No, sir. That will conclude the staff report.
All right. We'll get to agenda approval. Alex and I talked about it. We have Mr. Nealon and Van Harrell are here from the Union County to speak. And if they assure me their presentations only last ten minutes, I'd like to, rather than hold you over through the Stinson Farms discussion, I'd rather like to bump y'all ahead of them. Are y'all on the call right now?
This is Patrick. Yes, sir.
How about Van Harrell, are you on?
Yes, I'm on. So the presentation that we have, my camera's not working. Hang on one second. Here we go. Presentation that we have regarding the reappraisal was about a thirty-minute presentation. I'm not sure where the ten minutes came from. We can do an abbreviated version, but you'll be missing some information that the rest of the towns have. We would hate for that to happen, but however you want us to proceed, we can do it.
All right. Now, we don't want to miss any information, so we'll just hold you your spot. And then Patrick, is yours ten minutes?
I can make it less than ten minutes.
All right. Well, I recommend we swap four and five, make number five, four, and four, five. Any other changes or additions? David, do we need to add anything? I heard y'all talking.
David, you're on mute, I think.
We might have lost him.
Am I good?
Now we're good. Did you need to add anything?
No, we don't think it'd be, we, no, we're good.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the changes I just read?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Shaw?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ayers. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right. The ayes have it. All righty. All right, Patrick, you're up.
Thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yep. And Aaron's getting your presentation up, I believe.
Great.
Here we go.
One of my roles with the county is to administer the county's CDBG project. Next slide, please. CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. It's a federally funded program run out of HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department. Union County receives a direct allocation every year from the feds. Towns, cities and towns can apply to the state for CDBG funding. And it is a competitive process. The county receives a direct allocation based on being an entitlement community. Currently, funds are available to Union County, Monroe, Wingate, Marshville, Weddington, Stallings, and I'm sorry, the camera is blocking the slide. Bear with me just a moment. And Waxaw. Only low to moderate income projects will qualify. I'll get into what that means on the next slide, please. This program is only for low to moderate income families. On the chart, you'll see three lines. If you could focus on the bottom line, there's a number highlighted. So a family of four in Union County that makes less than sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars would qualify as a low to moderate income family. So if you have a, an area of town where the aggregate is less than that number, you could qualify a project based on those income thresholds. You can also qualify projects by census tracker, census block. Unfortunately, Stallings does not have any of those that qualify based on census tracks. So your projects would have to be qualified through a survey process where we would interview the individuals to see how much they make to try to qualify those projects. Next slide. What can be funded? Acquisition of real property. If you had a neighborhood and wanted to build a park, you could acquire property for that. Public easements, you could acquire it for some of that. Clearance and demolition, if you have some blight in the community, you could use it to either rehabilitate or demolish those properties, public facilities, improvements, infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater, that sort of thing. Code enforcement kind of plays back to the clearance and demolition. If you have some blight in the community, and instead of tearing it down, you want to try to help fix it up, you could use it for that. Public services, this is one the county does quite a bit of. We have a senior meal program that we use CDBG funding for. So you have some residents in your town currently that are receiving either frozen meals or warm meals from Union County. And it's a lot of people that are not mobile or just don't have the means to provide meals for themselves. Special economic and job creation retention activities are also eligible. If you have a area of town that has some businesses that are struggling and serves a predominantly low to moderate income individual, they would qualify as well. Next line. Union County is in the last of the first five-year plan. We, we applied for this back in two thousand and fourteen, we're awarded in two thousand and fifteen, and we are nearing the end of our first five years. To date, what has the money been used for? City Monroe has received a rather large sidewalk project. When I was in Wingate, we actually used a lot of it for waterline rehabilitation projects, sewer outfall project, and a fairly large sidewalk project for ourselves. Town Waxaw had a sidewalk project, Marshville Water and Sewer Projects, and then Union County. I mentioned the public services. We've also done a waterline project, and we are starting a new program. It's a well program. There is a, a high, I don't want to say high, there's a established issue with contaminants in some of the wells in Union County. So what this program would be is if you have contaminated wells, you could apply to it. And Union County would have a program to help address the water quality issue. Sometimes that's a whole home filtration system. Sometimes that's re-sleeving the well. Sometimes it's fixing a septic tank on site that is leaking into the groundwater table. At the bottom, I just wanted to mention a few of these. We received an additional allocation for COVID money, and you can see some of the some of the organizations we are able to fund with that additional income. So by Stallings being a part of the program, our allocation is larger. They base it on Union County's population and the population of all participating municipalities. So, you know, while your citizens might not benefit from a lot of it, Union County citizens as a whole benefit from you all participating. Next line. Why should you all continue to participate? Again, it'll increase the annual allocation to Union County. It helps reduce the administrative burden. This is a federal program, so there is a lot of red tape, and it is, it is a lot of federal procurement, a lot of compliance, and it's just, it's a heavy lift. The ability to work with county staff, with our environmental health department, we have some data on where there are failing wells and septic tanks, so we can help with some of your citizens that have those issues, and there is no financial commitment for the town. You all have not applied for any money the first five years, but it also hasn't cost you anything. I do think there are some opportunities for the town moving forward. And really, the only reason you shouldn't participate is if you wanted to apply to the state for CDBG funding yourselves. That is the only caveat with this is you, if you're part of this program, you can't apply to the state for funding. So I went through that fairly quick, but I can answer any questions you all may have.
Well, Patrick, thank you for coming tonight. And then the obvious question is, how do we apply?
Well, you are already a member. Every three years, you have to pass a agreement that says you want to continue to participate. You do not have that from me yet for the next three years. They cut, the federal government comes out with new guidance every March, so we have to include that language in the agreements. So you will see an agreement from the county to you all sometime mid to late March. And at that point, if you all want to be a part of the program, continue to be a part of the program, you would just have to pass that agreement.
All right, but then how would we apply, though? I know we're members, we've been members for a while, but how do we apply?
So the first step would be trying to find an area that you would want to qualify a project. You would work with county staff to develop an application, and every year, there's an application process to the county. And we award funds based on whatever our annual allocation is.
Yeah.
Well, he, he indicated that we, we may have projects, or we, we may want to take advantage of this. Has there been some type of conversation already with your group on some projects that may be good opportunities for Stallings?
I think Alex has a few ideas of, of areas in the town that we might be able to qualify projects. So then it's just, you know, getting, getting some of that data, finding out if those individuals do qualify, and then putting an application to the program together.
Alex, and Steve, I think there's an area in your district that has some, some septic tanks that are opportunistic, but, butts up right against Indian Trail, and there's been some, some flooding concerns there. And in the, in the floodwaters, there's been some stuff that makes the grass go awful green. So it, that might be something we, we could ask staff to, to look at, help those homeowners out.
I got you. Thanks.
We definitely need to apply if all these other towns are getting sidewalks built, and we're spending our tax money, so.
Well, I should say, the, the city of Monroe, they were able to qualify by census tract, so it's a little bit easier. But the town of Waxaw did have to go out and do income survey on individuals. So it, even in a more affluent area, you can qualify some of those infrastructure projects.
Well, our Spring Hill area would qualify for everything, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Any other question? Any questions? More questions for Patrick? Well, thanks for bringing this to our attention. I told Alex I wrote CDBG block grants when I was right out of college, so I'm sure things have changed. They probably don't do it by long form anymore, but.
They just added a bunch of forms since then. They've kept all the original ones and adds them. But thank you all for the time tonight. I appreciate the support, and we look forward to working with you all.
All right. Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
All righty. Next up is our Stinson Farms. That was the discussion that was recessed from, from 1:25, 21. So as I said, the public hearing on this will be held on 2:22, 21. So I'll turn it over to Lynn.
Hey Lynn, you're muted in case.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, she can.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, we, this evening, we're here to review the Stinson Farms Development Agreement project. Next slide, please. Stinson Farms is a project that is approximately 72 acres. It's located on the northeast corner of 45 and Idlewild Road. Next slide, please. I did want to point out that there are two separate development agreements that will be approved with this project. These development agreements were submitted separately due to property ownership concerns. Next slide, please. These are the two separate development agreements. The one in orange was the first one submitted, and it consists mainly of apartments, townhomes, and it also consists of the commercial outparcels. The back portion in green was submitted a little bit later and is currently a residential part of the project. Next slide, please. The original plan was submitted to the town on, in April of 2019. The first application we received consisted of the Armistead and Withrow properties. As you can see from this site plan, there are 448 apartment units, 70 townhomes, nine commercial outparcels. And there was a 50-foot buffer that was being provided between the existing residential in the Shanamara neighborhood and the proposed development. Next slide. The second development agreement was submitted later that same year for the Stinson property. It consisted at that time of 105 townhome units, and it was providing a 30-foot buffer between the Shanamara neighborhood and the proposed development. Next slide. So with the development agreement, what the process is, the first process is really very administrative. We accept the application, and the first thing that we do, staff reviews the site plans for ordinance compliance. Next slide. During this process, staff noted several things, and in discussions with the applicant, requested that the two site plans be combined so that the plans could be reviewed as a single development. Another thing that staff requested was that the applicant include single-family residential adjacent to where, where there is existing residential neighborhoods to be in compliance with the Idlewild Small Area Plan. A large component of that plan was protecting and providing single-family where adjacent to single-family. So D.R. Horton was brought in to the project by the property owners as a sole developer, and the projects were combined. Next slide. So this is the first site plan that was submitted to staff that showed the two plans as one. This was submitted to the Development Agreement Subcommittee in August of last year. This plan consisted of 408 multifamily units, 203 townhome units, and 13 acres of commercial. And as you can see here, the applicant is still showing townhomes there adjacent to the Shanamara neighborhood. Next slide, please. The development agreement process, the next step after staff has reviewed it, made comments on the compliance portion of the project, is the subcommittee process. The Development Agreement Subcommittee is made up of three members of town council. And on this particular project, the subcommittee met four separate individual times. And through that process, there are conversations had about concerns with the project and it not including the single-family development, the buffers, some of the commercial uses, as well as the density. All of these issues were discussed with the applicant and negotiated through that subcommittee process. So next slide, please. So through these discussions, the Development Agreement Subcommittee was successful in having the single-family residential included where adjacent to Shanamara. They were also successful in negotiating a 100-foot buffer where adjacent to that existing neighborhood as well. You can see on this plan, this was presented to the subcommittee in November. The plan successfully reduced the number of residential units from 611, which is the two plans that were submitted separately combined, that's how many units there were, down to 428, which is a reduction of 183 units. But the subcommittee still had concerns with the plan, specifically with the number of fast food restaurants that were being presented, the location of the proposed convenience store with gas pumps that was shown on the site. They also had some further concerns with buffering. So at this point, the process, the subcommittee decided to move this plan onto the planning board with no recommendation. So next slide. So with that recommendation of basically no recommendation, the planning board did review the plan that was presented in November, in December of last year. And they did deny the plan based on the subcommittee's recommendation, as well as the fact that they still had concerns similar to the subcommittees with the, with the plan. So the next steps were the council continued to negotiate with the applicant. Negotiations went on through the majority of the months of December and January. And the outcome of that were 11 major concessions that were made by the applicant as a result of town council negotiations. And then here we are this evening, presenting the plan. So next slide, please. So I just wanted to take a moment to read through what the 11 major concessions that were negotiated are. One is the 100-foot buffer where adjacent to the Shanamara neighborhood. I wanted to point out as well that our ordinance does allow that 100 feet to be reduced to 70 feet with the addition of a five-foot fence. They also provided single-family residential adjacent to the existing single-family residential in the Shanamara neighborhood. There were three homes in the Shanamara neighborhood that did not have single-family residential directly behind them. But they do have the 100-foot buffer. They have a road in the side yard of the townhome building behind them. And the applicant agreed to plan additional tall, fast-growing evergreens in this area. They've also provided the Greenway Trails as shown on the Stallings Park Recreation and Greenway Plan, including the Stallings Spine segment along Idlewild Road frontage. They will be providing road improvements, including the widening of Idlewild Road to Four Lanes from 45 to Stevens Mill Road. They reduced the overall residential unit count on the DA site from 618 to 504, an overall reduction of 114 units. Next slide.
Wait a minute, Lynn. I thought you had 611 to 428.
Over the process of the project, the numbers shifted, and this number does include the additional property.
Oh, okay.
The intersection. That, that's where the numbers shift a little bit.
Right, the apartment unit behind the. Okay, got you.
Yes. Okay. Next slide, please. The applicant has agreed to reduce the allowable number of fast food restaurants from the three they had originally planned to one on the development agreement site. They agreed to remove two multifamily buildings and convert an area to single-family attached townhomes in the area where the multifamily was located previously. They moved the convenience store in one of the multifamily buildings to property that is the, that's at the interchange of 45 and Idlewild Road. This moves these uses further away from the existing and proposed residential units. They agree, the applicant has agreed that they will not pursue private sewer treatment if county sewer is not available. And finally, the applicant has agreed in concept to increase the setback size on Idlewild Road so that green space between the edge of pavement and knee wall is much closer to what is depicted on the exhibit shared at the planning board after the widening of Idlewild Road to Six Lanes by NCDOT. Please note the details of this need to be further worked out and confirmed. Next slide. So the final site plan as a result of these concessions is what's being presented here this evening and will be included as part of the final development agreement that is presented at the public hearing. I do want to point out that there's additional property that I just mentioned that will be added to the project that will not be part of the actual development agreement. This is where the townhome, or excuse me, where the convenience store with gas pumps will be located. They are at Marshall Hooks Road near the interchange of 45. And one of those multifamily buildings you can see has been shifted to this additional property as well. One thing I do want to point out with this project, you see the 100-foot buffer, you see the single-family residential next to the Shanamara development as well as that larger buffer. All of these things were negotiated by the town council and the town council subcommittee. Next slide. Just for comparison, I did want to put the two plans side by side so that you all could see how far the plan has come and what a difference the council's negotiations have made in this project. The original plan for the Armistead Withrow property seen there on the left, much higher density, not as much open space or green space, not much buffering. The final plan, as you can see, has more buffering, more green space, and the overall layout is much more attractive. Next slide. So the final step in the development agreement process is the public hearing. And as the mayor stated currently, that's scheduled for February the 22nd. And that is staff's presentation of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I know the applicant is here as well this evening, and I believe may have some comments. And I believe Matt McCarley, our legal representation, is here also and can answer any questions you all may have.
All right. Thank you, Lynn. Any questions for Lynn's on her presentation part?
Lynn, can you back up to, I think it's one slide back, please? I guess I'd be, yeah, that one. Be helpful to have that for council and public purpose to be available in a much larger scale and oriented the same direction.
And adding to that, the center part that follows the stream, which has the setback in the Greenway space or the, the green space. I, I, can we color code that as well to just show the additional green space in there?
Yeah. Could we get them like, like we have all the small area plans on that size? Is that what you're thinking about, David?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's helpful, but I cannot begin to make heads or tails out of this on my little laptop. But I'm sure she's got it.
Are you asking for a hard, I apologize for interrupting. Are you asking for a hard copy of the?
Oh, no. No.
Okay.
Just orient this the left. I don't think the left. Yeah, the left one is not oriented the same as the right one. So I would like to see them oriented the same direction. We can look at them basically, here's A, here's B, here's the big changes and similarities. And then if you do it in a PDF, we'll be able to blow it up as we need to.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Lynn. Good presentation.
Mayor, can I ask, is this available on the website? Because I think with previous plans, what has stayed on the website is the original site plan. I think it's important because there's a lot of interest in this, that the public has access to the most current plan as well as the old one. Is, is that on the website already?
The current plan is not. We received it yesterday, but we will make sure that that happens tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All righty. So Lynn, you said the applicant, some of their folk are here.
Yes, sir.
Let's see, John, are you here? Mr. Carmichael, you're on mute, I believe. Can anybody hear? I can tell he's getting frustrated.
He's definitely frustrated.
I guess he can hear us. Well, John, you want to log off and log back in?
Mr. Mayor, this is Wade Robinson. John just called me, and he's having some trouble, so he's going to try to log out, log back. He's not on mute, but he's just unable to get his audio working.
Yeah, that's what I, he, he nodded when I recommended that, so.
Yep. So I think he's going to try to come back in.
We'll give him a couple of minutes.
I'll apologize for that.
No problem. It's, it happens.
It's technology. Happened to me in the last meeting I had.
While we're waiting on John Carmichael, we could have D.R. Horton go ahead. Eland could introduce himself and his team, and then that might give John a few minutes to get logged in if Eland, you're available there.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. I'd be glad to, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
All right. Good. It's good to see you all again this evening. I appreciate the mayors and councils. All right, good. It's good to see you all again this evening. I appreciate the mayor's and council's time. And just, you know, while John's logging back in, I think as Lynn mentioned in her presentation, one of the advantages. I was just doing the quick Dr. Horton intro, John.
Oh, good.
Skip that slide. As Lynn mentioned, one of the advantages of our involvement was to kind of bring these two development agreements together with one developer. And so Dr. Horton is a, is a large company, but we're, we have a local presence. We're very involved in the Charlotte community. And, you know, we're, we, I think, again, one of the advantages is we are the home builder, we are the apartment developer, and we are the commercial developer. So there will be one developer handling this master plan in your gateway. And we're excited about making 100, the prospect of making $100 million investment in your community and making the improvements that are required in the TA to Idlewild that, again, as Lynn mentioned, will widen Idlewild from the Harris Teeter entrance down to Stevens Mill.
Thank you, Elam. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Lynn, Alex, I apologize for that. I don't, had a little difficulty with my computer. Thank you, Elam, for giving some background. Dr. Horton, I won't belabor this. Lynn did an excellent job going through the changes. Our team is here to answer any questions. Site's a little under 73 acres, as Lynn indicated. This is just a slide that traces the reduction in the residential density from February of 20 through today. It started at six, and this is, by the way, this is just the development agreement site. It's not the adjacent site. So I want to be clear about that so that I don't accidentally mislead you. This is just dealing with the development agreement site. But we started out with 623 units, 175 townhomes, 448 multifamily units, and then you can see the progression here. And then now, today, as we sit here, it's 504 units, which is a reduction from 623. And it's 336 units that are multifamily and 136 townhomes, and then 32 single-family detached homes next to Shanamarra. But this is a summary of the revisions. Once again, the residential density was reduced by, this is just the development agreement site, by 119 residential units. Multifamily units were reduced by 112 units. The townhomes next to Shanamarra were converted to single-family detached homes. The buffer was increased from 30 feet to 100 feet with the option to reduce it to 70 feet through the insulation of a fence as allowed by the Stallings Development Ordinance. Agreed to put evergreen trees and shrubs in the buffer next to the, to those homes on Angus Lee Court in the Shanamarra community. The convenience store was eliminated from the development agreement site and is proposed to be shifted to the west, to the intersection of Idlewild Road and Marshall Hooks Road. One fast-food restaurant would be on the development agreement site. And then the 24-foot wide landscape area along the site's frontage on Idlewild Road that Lynn was referring to. And then these are some changes that occurred throughout the process, added some lighting notes. Nick, if you want, is there anything here you'd like to talk about in terms of the revised plan?
I'll just mention a couple of brief items. John, you did a great job, and Lynn did as well. Really, this is the revised current site plan. And as you can see, some of the green areas, plan left side is the added evergreens for buffering. And then along the county line, moving plan left to plan right is where most of the updates occurred, where we removed two apartment buildings within the current developer agreement. And that opened up a lot of area and opened up opportunity for added usable open space. And those are some of the pocket areas that you can see the green areas in relation. And it also provided good separation between the townhomes and apartments in particular on that side. And then moving across along the Idlewild frontage is the 24-foot commercial buffer along the frontage and how that would relate with the site plan overall. And then the green area, or I mean, the red area is the future rezoning portion. And that's where you added one additional apartment building. And then on the right side is the commercial area right there. And that parcel size is about five and a half acres.
Thank you. This is just the Greenway exhibit once again. And then this, if there are questions about the open space, the natural areas, we can certainly provide answers to those questions. There are commercial area design standards that are part of this development agreement that we've, I'm happy to go through them or we can respond to questions. And then likewise, there are architectural standards for the single-family detached homes that would be located adjacent to the Shanamarra community. And then these are examples of those standards.
A minimum square footage is 2,700 on a single-family homes.
David or Elam?
The actual, there's a range in there. I think that was probably the average. They range from 2,300 square feet to 3,113 is what's proposed.
That's your question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yeah, I thought I saw 2,700 was the minimum square footage, but I'll go back and read my email.
Okay. And then there are architectural standards for the townhomes as well, and these are examples of those townhomes.
May I ask a question real quick?
Certainly.
This is David Shaw. It appears from the renderings, and it may not be the actual renderings, these are all on slabs. Isn't there a requirement for these to be on crawl spaces?
Nick, can you respond to that?
There is, and the ordinance calls for crawl space techniques. So as you can see on the foundations, you can see the masonry components. Now, it would give the feel of a crawl space feel with stem wall, foundation wall applications. And then all the units themselves would be raised up two feet from the adjacent street sidewalks as well. So that's another technique, crawl space technique that would be applied for the ordinance.
Thank you.
These are conceptual renderings of the multifamily buildings that Dr. Horton would construct. And Elam spoke during the subcommittee meetings about this at the planning board about the architectural design for these. Elam, is there anything you'd want to add to this?
It's, I think this is a, I think the key here was we came up with a design that kind of alluded to the historic nature of the land. So you can see in the, on the right side there, that's our clubhouse, which is intended to be a very modern farmhouse. And then the units play off of that. But it's a siding is a mix of stone and hardy, so very much a Class A product. And then, of course, the interior of the units are wood-like vinyl plank flooring, granite countertops, wood cabinets, and finishes that, again, would be in line with top-of-the-market apartments.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question on what's the estimated price per rental unit here?
No, sir.
No, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Right, thank you.
Sorry, Matt, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir, Brad, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry I was late, but I've been here since the beginning of this presentation, and thank you for the staff in Portland. I served on the subcommittee along with Linda, the district rep, and then John Martin. And I was, I think, part of the four. So my question is part process, part substantive about the plan, so I'll try to articulate it. We passed this on to the planning board on whatever date that was with, I think, a no decision. I think it was the question we came up with and the dispute or the, I say dispute probably is too strong of a word, but the, the definitional question became, is this frontage area? I don't think we were at the point in the subcommittee talking much further about the homes and the residential because we felt like with the larger buffer from Shanamarra, the reduction from a lot of multifamily to single-family, felt like it was moving in a very, very good direction. But we stumbled when we got to the frontage on Idlewild. And I believe we parted ways at that point with a definitional disagreement about what's a walkable activity center, and did that meet it? Onto the planning board, I didn't attend that meeting, but I understood they denied it for, I assume, I assume a very similar reason. What I'd like to know is, from that point till today, what are some things that were done to remedy that to make it more of a walkable activity center? And are we still at a definitional impasse on that? One thing I did note, and I think I'm very pleased about, is that the service station, John, the gas station, the the quick service station, whatever we call that, has been pulled from the center of the project and moved to what I think is a more appropriate location down by the interstate, across from another service station, it looks like. What else has been done? I'm going to ask Lynn and maybe John. And then, then the question is maybe for you, Matt, too, our attorney on land uses. Are we still at a definitional impasse such that we run a risk of lawsuit, denying this? Because that was mentioned earlier as a potential threat. I know I said a lot, but can we start with the walkable activity center, how we got closer to that, if we did?
I'm sure. I'll, I'll be happy to address that.
Sorry.
That's okay. If we, yeah, I think it'll leave you here on the site plan, the current site plan. I think several things occurred. The applicant has included in the plan, first of all, all the greenway trails that are shown on this property in our Parks Recreation and Greenway Master Plan to include a portion of that Sallings Spine that will run along the frontage of Idlewild Road. And in the future, we'll connect this all the way down to Stevens Mill Road, this project with the sidewalk. Some other things that were done, we were concerned about how the commercial development on the frontage of the property, how that functioned and integrated, and how it worked with those residential components. So the applicant went back, they provided a knee wall along that interior road where that roundabout is. So there'll be a short knee wall there with landscaping. They provided additional landscaping between those single-family residential units as well as the commercial. As Brad stated, or excuse me, Councilmember Richardson, the convenience store was sitting right there on the site where the cursor is located. So it was an entry point to this development, which is really a highway commercial use. And there is a concern that that really didn't provide for the walkability for the types of uses that people living in this resident, residential area may walk to, like a restaurant or, you know, a dentist office or some sort of an office use or retail use. So they, they agreed to move that gap, that convenience store closer to the interstate. So they pulled it to that end of the project. So that has helped. One thing that's happened, too, with adding this additional land is providing for more connectivity. And this is a vehicular comment, but connectivity is a big part of our overall, has been a big part of all of the planning efforts that we've done over the last years. So now you have a road that's going to be running parallel to Idlewild Road, going from Marshall Hooks, and eventually will go all the way to Stevens Mill. So that provides not only some pedestrian connectivity, but it also provides some additional connectivity from an automotive perspective. I know that wasn't the exact question, but I thought that was important to point out. But a lot of the landscaping you see along the frontage, the large setback that Councilmember Paxton really campaigned for, those are all things that have helped integrate this project, give it more of a sense of place, which I think is, well, I don't think it is, one of our key guiding principles in our comprehensive land use plan. So all of these things really are, have applied, and the applicant has, has provided things that increase the walkability as well as a sense of place.
Ms. Hare, I would probably add one other item to that description. And that is that the number of fast-food restaurants was dropped from three to one, making it less of an automotive use along that road corridor and more into a walkable activity center.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
And the redesign added some green areas to Councilmember Richardson as well. Nick, which, which green areas were, and I didn't mean Mac or Lynn, I didn't mean to interrupt y'all if I did. Nick, where were the new green spaces as a result of the redesign?
They're located on the plan bottom side, over right where your cursor is, right there, John. That opened up opportunity to front units right onto green space, not only streets. So I, just overall, that's going to have sidewalk connectivity in between the uses, all the interior streets, sidewalks on both sides, and full connectivity to all these green spaces in addition. So as Lynn had mentioned, it definitely opened up, in addition, while providing great connectivity throughout the site.
The removal of the convenience store is, the convenience store is by far the biggest trip generator, I believe, from a traffic standpoint.
That would make sense. One other question, comment, is to the west of this, excuse me, east of the site, not on the map. I don't think it's on the map. We have a development application in for a grocery store, I think, that is, that is a buy right development by a petitioner. So I wanted to point that out as well in the context of what this future road looks like. We're talking about a bigger, broader area. So I think it's to the extreme north of this photograph. And maybe if Lynn can move her cursor up that way, whoever's driving.
That's me.
And John, I think one more up, parcel up north there. It actually looks north, but in that area there, I believe we have a buy right development, an application in for a grocery store. And then on the further, furthest down on the bottom of the page, a question for staff is that big parcel right there. Talk to me about the development rights for that parcel. What's its zone and what will be there in the future?
Yes, that property is actually zoned, it's called CP 485. That particular piece of property was identified when we were going through our comprehensive land use plan process for office park use. It was zoned specifically for that, and that is what the vision in the plan is for that particular property from, that lies between this, this project and 45 to be developed for office use.
How many acres is that, Lynn?
I'm, I apologize, the applicant can probably answer that. I don't know off the top of my head.
I think, that's okay. It's not real, unfortunately.
John, you may know, do you know the acreage of that, the additional Withrow property?
Sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
Brad, did you get all your questions answered?
No, yeah, a couple other ones.
Well, I think so. I think maybe one that was maybe implied, but maybe not as explicit as maybe I should have made it is, you know, the developer contended he had the, the right to develop the previous plan that we, the planning board denied. Since that point, we've just discussed all of the changes that were made. Were this plan not approved, then, this is more of a protecting the town's interests that we all have maybe, maybe thought about. What are the risks to the town, this is a question for you, Mac, of, of, with concessions made, does this conform to our small-area plan, comprehensive land use? And if it does not, to what degree it does not, are we, are we a risk of a lawsuit on this? Just cut to the chase, that's my question.
This plan is, has made a lot of movement toward being a walkable activity center, which is the wording that's in the comprehensive plan. The original development plan, I would suggest to you, was not a walkable activity center. It was a high-density residential with highway commercial put across the front. This plan is much closer to a walkable activity center. I don't think there's a risk to us for it not being a walkable activity center. I think the risk to us is if the developer and their litigation attorney were to claim that they have a buy right use of anything listed in MU2 and could put anything they wanted across that commercial frontage. So load it up with fast-food restaurants and a C-store with gas. C store with gas pumps and whatever else they wanted to and not make the kind of concessions they've made for putting single family across the border with existing single family and to not have done the reductions that they've made in the multifamily uses and put in more of the townhome uses. Our risk is in turning it down at this point, not in not in failing to meet the plan. It's in having the developer argue that they didn't have to do any of these concessions and that they would rather sue the town over being able to do by right MU two uses throughout this development area.
All right. Anything else, Brad?
No.
All right. Thank you. Can we go back, John, a couple of slides that where we had the eleven? Where we were talking about the one fast food, I think it might be the next slide back. Okay, there you go. Number eight. What is the the sentence, this limitation or restriction shall not apply to fast casual restaurants such as Panera, Chipotle, Dunkin and Starbucks. So what is what does that sentence mean?
Well, the fact, well, what we say is a traditional fast food is the things that you know, the Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, the Arby's. A Panera Bread is is one where folks more of a fast casual where it's quick, but it's not your traditional fast food that's you know, open twenty-four hours a day and and things like that, that that the, you know, we have a Panera Bread, you know, by our house that we walk to from time to time to go to. And we have a Chipotle, too. So that's just the distinction is just between those types of restaurants and the fast food.
Well, I know the difference. I eat at all of them, but.
Well, no, I didn't mean imply you didn't, but that's.
That's why I'm just trying to figure out what this limitation or restriction shall not apply.
Oh, well, you like, for instance, if what we're saying is you could have one traditional fast food, but you could have a Panera Bread. You could have a Chipotle, you could have a Starbucks, you could have a
Yeah.
An Applebee's, you could have a what have you.
Right. So that's not out of the questions to get one of those a sit down. So well, Chick-fil-A and McDonald's, all those are supposed to be sit down, but you know, we don't consider them that. All right. I got you now. Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir. Well, and I would suggest that that statement needs to include the drive through word. Because we specifically said no more than one drive through fast food. And I know a lot of people like Starbucks, but Starbucks does offer a drive through function. So I think we need to include that language in that statement.
Agreed.
So does Panera Bread now?
I'm sorry?
So so does Panera Bread. I was just adding that.
Oh, they have a drop through? I didn't know that.
Well, they have, you know, I know like the one at Cotswold Mall, they have, a lot of them have curbside now just because of COVID, right?
The newest ones they're building have actual drive throughs like on seventy-four.
Okay.
So John, I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm Wade Robinson. I'm part of the project team for the development side here. And just a quick background, I know the development subcommittee is familiar with me, but I spent about thirteen years with Crawson developing shopping centers and I've done about three million feet of retail. And the one thing I'd want to suggest with all due respect to Councilmember Paxton and the suggestion. If I lived in Shenamora, I sure would not want to preclude Panera Bread, Chipotle, Dunkin, Starbucks, any of those users because they have drive through windows, because I think those are all very appealing and attractive. I think the ones you guys were opposed to initially were the fast food restaurants. And we understand that, and it's been a long, long, hard struggle to get to the point where we've eliminated those. But we think these are certainly amenities that add to the project. And the other thing I would say is with the evolution of the business right now, restaurants such as Chili's now have drive through windows. So those are clearly sit down restaurants. They're not in that quick casual void between fast food and true sit down. But we know Outback has a drive up door. Chili's has a drive up window in their new prototype. So if you have prohibitions on drive up windows, you may have nothing there but the one fast food restaurant. So I I think that's something to really think long and hard about and would be very difficult for us. Because those are the things that we think are tremendously appealing to our residents and the rest of the community.
Council. Paxton, I was reading an article also on the fact that with COVID, a lot of the traditional not sit down restaurants are going to have drive throughs going forward simply because of the requirement, I mean, what they saw from the pandemic. So I don't know if that may be something that we would need to research because I mean, it potentially their business model could change quite a bit. I mean, it could include quite a bit of other restaurants that we don't traditionally think as drive throughs today.
I understand the point, and I have no objection to any of those that are listed there as being included in this development. But I would have to think long and hard about whether or not we would want to allow those particular ones to have drive throughs. And I know what you're saying, but hopefully we're not going to be dealing with the pandemic forever. So now I'll just give that some thought.
Well, when I consider developments, you know, my thinking is they develop to our standards. We don't develop to theirs. You know, they're coming to our hometown. And so that's that's my litmus test. All right. Anything else, John, or?
The last thing we just want to point out, we briefly touched, there will be transportation improvements. But the last thing is this would, you know, Elam was alluding to the dollar value of the development. And we just, if this thing were to move forward, Mr. Mayor and council members, it would have a pretty significant impact on the taxes here, tax revenue for stallings, which would be about five eighty-five. Based on our estimates, Union County would be a little over one point six million. So the total tax impact would be just over two point two million per year. But that's that's really the presentation. We're happy to, you know, answer any questions and continue to have discussions with you. We, as always, appreciate your time and your consideration.
Yeah. Can we go over the road improvements? You know, Linda was just voted vice chair again for another year at Carp O. So we're we're lucky to have her on our town council. So and I think the citizens that are listening could understand what improvements y'all are making in more detail.
Be happy to. And and I think Andrew Eagle is on the the Zoom meeting, Mr. Mayor, he's a traffic engineer. But essentially, there'd be a four lane cross section constructed along the the sites frontage of Idlewild Road to Stevens Mill Road. There'd be new turn lanes and increased storage lengths at the three site entrances, new right turn lanes and storage at Idlewild Road and Stevens Mill Road, that intersection. And then there'd be a right turn lane with added storage to the southbound I forty-five exit ramp that connects to Idlewild Road. And, you know, the cost of these improvements is estimated to be over three million dollars. And then this is, I don't know if you can see this, but this is graphic that depicts the the turn lanes and the improvements here. Can you see that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So this is the main entrance. Remember, this is the roundabout. And then Idlewild, this is Idlewild Road and the three access points, A, B, and C. And you can see the turn lanes, the dual lefts into the site, can see the through lanes. There's a four lane section, as you can see, all the way down Stevens Mill.
Yeah, then that's the that's the point I wanted to make, John. It's all the way down to the light at Stevens Mill.
Yes, sir.
And then if you could go back to your summary, the last paragraph, I think is key for everybody to understand. Now, if you could explain that one.
So this, you're gonna complete this, so the the boxes with people's pictures is blocking it and I can't, okay, now I can move it. Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry for my technical problem. So these would be installed ahead of the NCDAT project. Now, I don't know, Wade or Andrew, is this still, this timeline, is this still accurate, the twenty twenty-five? Who knows, right?
Yeah, sorry. This is this is Andrew Eagle, the traffic consultant on this. And John, you did a good job summarizing high level of the roadway improvement. So I appreciate that. I know NCDAT is is kind of put a lot of their projects on hold with their their budget concerns, but things are starting to starting to let loose, starting to start up again. A lot of them still are on hold. That twenty twenty-five timeline, I'm not sure how accurate that is anymore. And I think a lot of their projects are kind of in flux right now of trying to get back on track on on things. But we performed the study with the intent that the DOT project wouldn't be in place when the the proposed development goes in.
Well, they've notified us that they're that they're re, they're looking at this project again, DOT is. But Linda, can you add anything to that? Did we lose Linda?
Linda, you're muted.
When Alex was talking in his report tonight, he talked about the fact that the town has always gone on record insisting that we wanted a four lane cross section here and full movement at the Stevens Mill intersection. And I know that's something that some of you, at least on the development team, would prefer as well. But DOT has been insistent that their requirements to look at the purpose and need of the project would require them to do six lanes there. We're going to try to revisit that with DOT. And I think possibly the fact that you all are building this four lane section may give us some leverage to get what the town wants as opposed to what DOT wants, because we really do not want a six lane cross section in this part of the town. So I don't know if I answered your question, Mayo, but that's that's kind of.
You did. They can spend that money elsewhere on some other roads installing. So instead of.
Well, it won't come to Stallings probably. If we give up the project, they'll send it to somewhere. But if we get the four lane section that we need and want, we may be okay with them taking the money elsewhere.
All right.
So Mayor, may I beat a dead horse once more?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mac, I wrote down something when you answered a question a moment ago of mine about about the grounds upon which there may be a disagreement that rises to the level of litigation. Not presuming that it will, but but I have some concerns. I think we all do. You said it wouldn't be based upon the definition of whether this meets or does not meet walkable activity center. You, I think, expanded it to include the entire site. It's such that I've heard you say they could stack the frontage with any use allowable in MU two. Did you also mean that they could stack the back of the property with anything allowable in MU two such as more apartment complexes or buildings of multifamily that might increase the residential count on the site? Albeit, it would go through a CZ process, I think, or well, I'm guessing with it. Talk me through that.
It wouldn't go through a CZ process because this application predates the changes that the town made to the ordinance that would put multifamily and commercial here into a CZ process. They are under an older set of rules. Their claim is that they can do anything that MU two allows on this site. And our claim is, yes, you can look at MU two uses, but if you're doing it through a development ordinance, a development agreement, you also have to have the town's agreement to do that. And we are going to stand pat on the comprehensive plan that says this should be a walkable activity center. So trying to marry those two issues, they're looking at MU two uses. We're trying to get a walkable activity center. And the closer we get those two together, the less likely a lawsuit is. At this point, the developers have agreed to what they presented tonight, what Lynn presented, what they presented. If you turned this down, they have made it plain that this is not the plan that they would take to court. They would take a previous iteration of this plan as the one that they claim they would be able to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'll turn it back over to John to finish y'all's presentation.
We did, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate y'all's time.
All right. Can we go to, the question I have is to the site that's the site, the overall site map, which shows where the convenience store is, the C store, that one right there. So I think I'm sure I've stated it in the past, I've been the one trying to reduce the number of apartments. And everybody knows that I'm not a fan of apartment units. And so I just, you know, taking two away from the 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 primary project and putting one back over here, I think, you know, was a little bit you know, just unnecessary. So, you know, adding that other apartment unit behind the convenience store there. You know, I wouldn't support that if this project, you know, got approved. So I'd like for y'all to look at, you know, making that, you know, green space or or some other type of amenity.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
From here, it's hard to tell from the site map, where is the parking exactly? Is that pull in parking for the for the apartments?
It's all here. Can you see, is that better, Councilmember Ayers? I'm trying to zoom in. You see my cursor, my hand?
Yes, okay.
It's all parking.
Okay, okay. So those are not roads. There's the parking units. Okay, thank you. And then one of my second question, second of three, is I I'm assuming that you know, you you've reduced the number of drive through type or fast food restaurants. So I'm assuming that other other restaurants are planned to go in their space, just not fast food. Is that kind of where that other commercial areas would go?
Yeah, the other commercial areas are here and they, it could really be a lot of different things. I don't want to speak for for Andrew Wiley or Elam or Wade, but it could be restaurants, it could be medical office, could be a financial institution. They don't know at this point, but it'd be those types of uses and it could be, once again, restaurants.
Okay, okay. And then my my third question, and I've been asking this of all of our new development, is obviously we're going into more of a a green period here. Is there any type of green construction being used here? Any charging stations, any pre-pulled two twenty outlets in the houses for electric automobiles? I mean, I I see this as this probably won't be finished for two, three, four years. And by that time, we'll probably be five percent or more EVs at that point and just kind of wanting to know what your thoughts are there.
That's a great question. And that was a great commercial last night in the Super Bowl with the electric car with Will Ferrell. But hey, Elam, do you have, can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, we, I'd be glad to. Yeah, we often include a car charger up in front at the apartment community near the clubhouse. It's usually has two charging stations. Sometimes we do some pre-wiring for additional charging stations. And something else we've started doing is in the apartment community, we have detached garages and will often include a two twenty outlet in the end garage unit where a charging station can be added later very easily. But I would just, I would just add to that, that by design apartments and townhomes, townhomes, you know, create a little bit denser of a living environment, which is also green. When you put these types of units adjacent to an interstate, it allows people quick access out to the interstate. So whereas if you took all of these dwelling units and made them single family and put them out in the county, then all of those people are driving in traffic through your community to get to the interstate. And so again, by design, apartments properly located. apartments properly located as these are near an interstate tend to be green. Additionally, they're located next to future commercial and across from an existing Harris Teeter Center, which provides walk walkability opportunities for people to stay out, get out of their car and ride their bike and take advantage of that 12 foot multi-use path.
Right. And our, you know, my concern is, is that we just don't want you to, you know, to be a community that might be out of date by the time it's finished being built. That's that's our biggest concern there.
It's a it's a great point.
You know, and also, obviously, we're trying to attract, you know, young professionals who tend to be, you know, kind of green technology seems to be important to them. So that's just kind of something that comes up quite a bit with discussions with our technology groups and things of that nature. So just just wanting to be a little forward thinking there as far as being able to provide those amenities to your folks.
Absolutely. Thanks for asking about that.
What's the scale on this map? I can't read it up there.
Nick says a one per one one inch is 100 feet?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, that now now I'm wondering if that's not one inch from Shanamar to those homes.
Well, there's a dimension.
It is. Yeah, it's 100 feet, that dimension right there that shows that. And this could be printed off. This is all to scale, the drawing itself.
Can you see that, Mayor? That's not an inch.
Well, this is, I guess that's when you have the large plan printed.
This is a 30 by 42 sheet that actually was submitted. I know this is different from PowerPoint itself, but this was all drawn to scale, one inch equals 100 feet.
This is this is this is your your inch, Mayor. Can you see that at the top?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just have to print it off and
And if you look at it, the zero starts in, look at the scale, it shows 50 feet from one way and then 100 feet on the other. So
I got I got you. Yeah.
The 100 feet is right within there.
I'm just gonna have to, like I said, yeah, this map is reduced in size, obviously.
Oh, yes. It's, yeah, this thing is a when you print it up, it's a big boy.
I have a question. Why?
Yeah, David.
All right. One of one of my big concerns and and I know the traffic improvements are, they look great on paper. And if they're actually done on time, they would be a big, big improvement to the area. But one of the concerns I have is this building or this project gets built out and the DOT or something happens to prevent that, the road improvements from getting done and we're stuck with a project that's completed with a lot of new people here and the roads are not done as as we expected and we're stuck with worse traffic. How do we alleviate that from happening?
I can speak to that. So the traffic impact study is just that it identifies the impacts from this proposed development and what roadway improvements are needed to mitigate those those trips. So the roadway improvements being proposed are connected to the development. If the development moves forward, the roadway improvements have to move forward as well.
Is there a way to ensure that they? I mean, I, how is that done? And I know another project, they before the first, I think it was before the first plot was constructed or residents were in the roadway improvements had to be completed. Have we got something like that on this one as well?
I believe, I don't know on this particular one how it's handled, typically handled through the driveway permit or, like you said, the first certificate of occupancy. But it is tied to the development as far as their their driveway permits to have driveways along Ottawa Road, that those roadway improvements need to be in place prior to to the development opening up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Any other questions? Comments? All right, John and your team, thank y'all for coming tonight. Can y'all, can you send this presentation to Alex? And then he can get it to the council members because I'd love to send it out to my distribution list so they can see it prior to the public hearing on the 22nd.
I will do that. I'll do that tonight.
Thank you, John.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye bye.
All right, Mr. Harold, thank you for being patient.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate the time to be here tonight. We will try to get this done as quickly as possible, but we want to make sure you had the full breadth of the presentation that we are sharing with rest of municipalities through through this reappraisal and revaluation process. My share on my screen or somebody else doing it for me? I think I've got control.
That is up to you. We have smaller version, so yours might be the best because we have the version with the notes attached.
Okay. Can everybody see this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name's Van here. I'm tax administrator of Union County. I've been with the county for almost 17 years this year. We, this is, I was was the revenue division director and that was my first exposure to the town of Stallings when we started collecting taxes for the town. I believe it was in 2012, 2013, when your prior collector retired. So we've been working with Stallings for a long time. With me tonight, I've got Robin, Mary and Phil Everie. Robin is our assessment division director and Phil is our appraisal director and he has direct responsibility for the reappraisal process.
Mr. Harold, I feel compelled to say something since you just mentioned you work with Debbie Wagenhauser.
Well, we I knew Debbie well, prior to her retirement and saw her recently somewhere here in Monroe, but it's been a while since I've seen her.
Well, my wife just told me yesterday hospice has been called in on her husband. So
Oh, no, I did not know that.
So somebody else might have some more details, but since y'all worked with her, I thought y'all would like to know.
I appreciate you telling us that. Debbie was a good one, good one to work with. We had a good relationship with her.
Right.
So as you know, we are or may not know, I would hope so at this point, because this is our 14th presentation over the last four or five weeks. So the word is out that the county is doing a reappraisal revaluation. And just to kind of touch on the things that are guiding us through this process, number one is the fundamental principle to be fair and equitable to every taxpayer in Union County. We want to make sure everyone is treated fairly and in accordance with general statutes and and we implement industry best practices related to the work that we do to make sure that happens. So what is a reappraisal and why are we doing it, especially right now? That has been the most common question we have received through this process in the middle of everything that's going on. Why are you doing reappraisal? We'll answer the what and then get into the why. Simply put, this is a systematic review of all property, real estate, real property in Union County. The is done on a periodic basis. Other classes and types of property are appraised annually. We have to do this to be in compliance with state statutes. We'll get into it in a moment. And it's to reestablish equity and fairness in the property tax base. That goes back to that principle of fair, fair and equitable treatment of taxpayers. North Carolina is a is a market value assessment state, meaning properties at the point in time of reappraisals completed, property is supposed to be assessed at true market value at that point in time. And then, of course, part of the reason to do it is to restore tax base loss to equalization. We'll touch on that briefly as well. As to the timing of a reappraisal, there are three timelines that general statutes allow or require a reappraisal to be completed. Number one is a maximum eight year period between appraisal cycles. The bottom point here allows, you know, come back up to the middle point, but the the bottom point on the slide, the board of county commissioners can opt to advance a reprisal cycle sooner than eight years if they deem that it's necessary and appropriate to do so. That was the case in 2004 and 2008, for those of you that have been around Union County since that timeframe. We had a very rapid period, appeared a very rapid growth that far outpaced the consistent growth that we've seen over the last four or five years. The second note here, the second point on this slide, when you hit certain criteria under statute, you're required to do a reappraisal. And that is where we are. The board of county commissioners did not advance the appraisal cycle this time. We were actually mandated by the state of North Carolina to do this reappraisal for two reasons. The sales assessment ratio is determined by the state and then the population sounds of the county. And the sales assessment ratio, we'll explain here, is simply a comparison of current assessed values for property tax purposes compared to the sales price of properties in the current market. What the state does is they request a sample of properties from us annually and quarterly that we provide them data on and they determine what our sales ratio is based on the current market conditions. With that ratio, if you get plus or minus 15% of market, meaning you're at 115% or less than 85% of current market prices in the sample and your population is greater than 75,000 residents, you have to do a reappraisal within three years of that of that trigger date, if you will. We are, we received our notification from the Department of Revenue in March of 2018. At that point, our sales ratio had hit 84.8%. So we're just slightly under the threshold there, but they did send this notification that we had to complete this within three years. The timeline for this, I obviously noticed, like I just said, came in March of 18. We had to submit a reappraisal plan to the state by the end of that year. In October of 2020, schedule of values, and we'll go into details of what that is here in a moment. That was presented to the board of county commissioners. They had a public hearing on November 2nd and the board adopted that proposed schedule of values on November 16. The effective date of the reappraisal was January 1st, 2021. So we are in the process of finalizing that. Now, we're mostly done. You are actually going to be the first municipality in the county to hear what the impact, the true impact is for Stallings because we just finalized that and presented it to the board of county commissioners this afternoon. The end of February, early March, we anticipate mailing our reassessment notices to every property owner, letting them know what their new value is. And that opens an appeal window that will remain open until roughly around the end of May, when when the Board of Equalization Review can adjourn for the for new appeals. We'll skip through this slide here.
Man, I got a question. Who sets the criteria for the revaluation? Is that set by the legislature or?
From what standpoint?
Those three criteria that you listed, you had the red box around?
Yes, that that is that is North Carolina general statutes. That that has been in effect for at least 20 years. The 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 second component around the sales ratio of the population, that is newer than the than the rest of the statute. I think that came in the early 2000s, right around 2000, 2001. But it was necessary because you had rapidly growing communities, particularly in urban regions that that were way out of line from their tax assessments and and it just caused a lot of problems in various areas. So that's why that statute was enacted.
Well, I knew there were statutes. I just want, so you answered my question and they were, they've been in place for 20 some years. So
Yes. So as soon as schedule of values, a new schedule is has to be adopted for every reappraisal cycle. It establishes all the rates and procedures in effect for that next period of time before the subsequent reappraisal. So anything that was adopted in November that took effect January 1st, that governs everything we do from evaluation standpoint until four or eight years from now, whatever whatever the case may be. How do we build that database? Or there's values, we use simply sales volume and sales information from sales in the county since the previous reappraisal, which was 2015. During that time, we've had over 34,000 qualified sales that we were able to pull from and use to value land by cost of improvements. We also look at regional construction cost indices. And this whole process is designed to capture the value of the current real estate market. Not it's not perspective in nature. We're not telling you where your value is going. We're telling you based on the sales that have occurred in the last, particularly 24 months, 12 to 24 months, this is what the market currently is. And again, that schedule details all the rates and variables that are used in the valuation process. Our methodology is similar to fee appraisal, but it's different. This is a mass appraisal process. We don't look at one property and compare it to two or three others. We look at neighborhoods as a whole. We, it's it's designed to be that way as opposed to a fee appraisal process. We use the same approaches to value with sales, cost and income. Now, we use some alternative process to value land when necessary, allocation, abstraction. That's when you, if you have an area where that's built out, you don't have a lot of vacant land that's selling, so you don't have land sales per se. But every property that sells a component of that value is the land underneath the building. The rule of thumb for that, if we have to allocate that value is roughly 20%. That's that's kind of an industry standard there. For land valuation specifically, we break the county up into appraisal neighborhoods. We take into consideration influence factors such as floodplain, road frontage, all anything that can affect the value of that property is taken into consideration. When we're valuing improvements, we look simply at replacement cost due and adjust that for depreciation, neighborhood location.
Can you go over that 20% that you said again? What was that again?
In a situation is when we're valuing a property that's land only, let's say we have, let's just use Stallings for example, let's say the town is completely built out with the exception of maybe a 10 acre tract in the center of town. If we don't have any land sales in the area that would kind of dictate what that value may be, we would take land, we would take that value and reduce it from a standpoint of, actually, that wouldn't apply to vacant land, it would apply to to the land and residential neighborhoods. Let's say you've got a neighborhood like Shanamar that's built out. There's no land sales, there's no lot sales in that neighborhood. A component of the value of the property is going to be land value. Then you have your improvement value. So if we don't have any sales that dictate that land value, such as vacant lot sales, we would allocate a portion of the total value of that property to the land, which is typically going to be around 20%. So if your house, if you if your property is worth $100,000, we would say roughly 20,000 of that would be attributable to the land. The rest would be attributable to the improvement that's on that lot.
And what, how did y'all come up with 20%? Is that just historical or?
That's an industry standard. It typically is a range from 15 to 23%. Kind of as a rule of thumb, we use, we use, the value is going to be there no matter what. So if we say it's 15%, then the lot's going to be 15,000 and the improvement would be 85,000. If we say it's 20, it's an 80 20 split. So it's the value is going to be there. It's just a matter of which piece we're contributing it to.
All right, got it.
We have an ongoing quality assurance review process where our goal is to review every property in the county periodically. We have to date reviewed about 64,000 properties via either desktop review with aerial imagery or sending appraisers out in the field. We do, we use both because sometimes we can't get on the property. So we have to use all the other tools that we have at our disposal for that. And that's just to make sure our data is as correct and accurate as possible so that we have fair and fair and equitable assessments of property taxes. We have a process called neighborhood delineation that was first used in the county in the 1980s. And this is where we break the county up into appraisal neighborhoods. We typically start at the high school attendance zone or districting level, and then we break it down into smaller units from there. We have roughly 900 appraisal neighborhoods in the county, and that's not talking specifically about a subdivision. It could be a subdivision. It could be a group of subdivisions. Where or it could even be multiple neighborhoods in one in a single subdivision such as Brandon Oaks here in Indian Trail. We have probably four or five different appraisal neighborhoods within that subdivision because of different quality of homes, type of homes and so forth. It allows us to analyze smaller sets of market data based on the sales information we have to ensure a more equitable valuation with like properties and also maintains consistent values in the manager in the market area. This is just a representative sample of the neighborhoods that are in the county. So for example, if you look at every neighborhood is color coded. If you look at the southeast corner, which is down Highway 601 coming out of Monroe, you notice that's pretty much one color. There may be a few others in there, but generally speaking, that we would consider that an appraisal neighborhood. You come over towards Stallings, Indian Trail, Weddington, Waxall area, you see a lot of gray in here. If this was a live map and we could zoom in, you would see individual colors starting to populate as we zoomed in closer. But because there's so many appraisal neighborhoods in that area, it just shows up on this particular representation as a general gray area. We've talked about equity through this whole process. This is just to show you kind of the trends and how and what that means. We've talked about equity, um, through this whole process. Uh, this is just to show you kind of the trends and how and what that means. And this is based on the samples performed, studies performed by D O R. So you have four classes of property that we assess. You have real estate, personal property, public service companies, which are companies such as Duke Energy, uh, Union Electric, C S X Railroad, Piedmont Natural Gas, those are your system, what they kind of refer to them as system properties. Um, that those two and motor vehicles are assessed annually. So it's always going to be a market value. Real estate, however, is a is a periodic reappraisal, which is what we're doing now. So you can see in twenty fifteen, which is our last reappraisal, we came in after the reappraisal was complete at ninety-nine point seven one percent of market value. We averaged five to seven percent a year drop in that sales ratio because that's how fast the market was growing. Or the the how fast the the real estate prices were increasing in the in the area. Versus, and so at the end of twenty twenty, you see our sales ratios at sixty-nine percent. So in theory, as a whole, that means the county in totality is under assessed based on the study by thirty-one percent. So it means we're about thirty, thirty-one percent below market, generally speaking. Personal property, you're always going to be at market, motor vehicles always at market. So this question of equity comes to outside of the real estate area itself comes to the public service companies. By law, if your sales ratio drops below ninety percent or goes above a hundred and ten percent, public service companies get a statutory reduction in their assessed values. So once, once that happens, you hit, we get a notification from the Department of Revenue that you can only assess these companies at a certain level, and we've got some more information on that on the next couple of slides. So from, just to show you the effects of that for the county, the total public service company value in Union County is four hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. Because of the sales ratio being out of line with statute, because we have not done a reappraisal since twenty fifteen, we could only assess them at eighty-three percent of that value. So we can only bill them on three hundred and ninety-seven million dollars, which costs the county about six hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. It's not a lot when you look at the grand scheme of the county budget as a whole, but it does impact every jurisdiction. I'm not sure what the specific impact for stylings is, but there would have been some sort of reduction in what you could bill, um, the public utilities for, um, for twenty, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. So what is the anticipated countywide impact? That's that's a question a lot of people want to know is how much you're going to raise my taxes. We want to make this very clear. We're not raising your taxes. We are, all we are doing is determining property tax now, prime property values. Uh, tax rates are set by each governing board, whether it be the county or the municipality. And that is the ultimate determining factor as to what an individual property owner's property tax bill will be. Um, the value is 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 just one component. There, there are other things to go into consideration there. Generally speaking, again, you're getting this information before any other municipality because we just finished it up today. Pretty much every property in Union County saw an increase. There was a small percentage, uh, we had, we have a hundred and four thousand parcels in the county. It was about forty-two hundred properties countywide that had some sort of decline. Most of that was very small and 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 in rural areas of the county. Um, so all in all, most properties did see an increase. Again, the current valuation year is two thousand and fifteen. Um, that year was a contraction in the tax base. Um, as we were preparing for this, going through this process, and and again, this is the county as a whole, it's not talking about individual properties. We anticipated the county's residential, commercial property tax base to increase approximately thirty percent. Um, it has kind of, it did come in a little higher than that because that thirty percent was based on the study from the state. Um, once we actually got into the process and and worked through all the valuations, um, it did come in a tick higher, and I'll share that data with you in a moment. Uh, rural land, uh, did not quite hit that thirty percent mark we were expecting, uh, but it did increase also. Part of this process each year with the reappraisal cycle is the every jurisdiction has to publish a revenue neutral tax rate. That simply means the tax rate applied to the new value base that generates the same amount of revenue that you had last year under the old valuation. So you don't have to adopt it, but you do have to put it in the budget document. So any of you that have been around for for more than one appraisal cycle involved in the council, um, you're familiar with that process. Um, just to give you.
Let me ask you a question, uh, and I can't remember my tax bill. And when the last reappraisal was done in two thousand and fifteen, what was the tax rate, uh, uh, that year and then the after the appraisal?
I know it's. Well, that was a, keep in mind, fifteen was a reduction in the in the values. Um, so the tax rate, I would have to get bear with me one second. I think I've got it back here. Looking at the town of stylings.
Well, I know what I was, I was wanting to know what the county rate was.
I don't have that full rate in front of me, but it was roughly, I want to say it was roughly seventy-seven, seventy-eight cents. And it it dropped down, um, the the rate, I'm, I'm sorry, the rate was actually lower because the the valuation, our, I know our revenue rate went up, I just don't have that number right in front of me. I know at the times, at at the time stylings was, um, styling specifically, it stayed the same, actually went from, it stayed at twenty-one and a half because because you just, you didn't adjust rate even though the values um, decreased.
Yeah.
But I can get that, I can get that information for you.
Yeah, I lost that battle. Um, rate should go down, revenue goes up thirty percent, rate should go down.
Right, right. But key, again, keep in mind fifteen was a reduction in value. So you you would have had the inverse effect, the rate and a reduction in value to go revenue neutral, your rate will go up. If your rates, if your value goes up to go revenue neutral, your rates go down. So it's an inverse, it's an inverse effect there.
Mayor question?
Yeah, Brad.
Uh, Van, if this takes more than ten seconds to answer, don't. Um, how does the school system tax rate? Do they also publish revenue neutral rates and is that different than?
The school system is not, the school system does not set a tax rate. Um, the county is in charge of the tax rates for the school system. And it's part of the county's general fund rate. Um, so it's not, and it shows up separately on the tax bill. But, um, it's all part of one single rate that the county establishes.
Okay, thank you.
So I will, I will kind of gloss over this here. Um, within the revaluation process, we also adjusted values for the present use value program. Um, this is a tax relief program for active farm properties. Their income and ownership requirements had to be met for this. But what a lot of people don't realize, they know Union is a rural county and is heavily involved in the agricultural community. But almost forty-six percent of the land in Union County is is covered under this program. And that's a hundred and ninety-one thousand acres. So it's, there, there is still a significant amount of of rural attributes to this county from from a, from an open land standpoint. Even as even, and even in light of your previous discussion on the development you have coming in there in stylings. There are areas that are crowded, there are areas that are that are wide open, so. The rate that, uh, they pay per acre in twenty fifteen for the ag property, um, instead of being billed at market value, uh, they are only charged three hundred and eighty-five dollars per acre. The rest of that is deferred tax liability. So if they do sell that property, we do bill them and they pay the last three years prior to the sale date. That rate is changing to four twenty per acre, so it's about a nine percent increase. We have these three categories, but by far the agricultural pieces are largest, um, single uh, classification in this program. Just to kind of give you an example, if a farmer has or property owner has fifty acres in use value agricultural program, the taxable value under new schedule will increase to twenty-one thousand dollars from nineteen thousand to fifty. And to your point, Mr. Mayor, if that tax rate stayed the same, the the taxes would increase by twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents on that farmer. But again, in in the situation where a, again, each board makes their own determination, and the situation where there's a significant increase in value, there likely will be some kind of decrease in the rate. So it, again, it's a it's an inverse effect there. But that does result in a tax deferment of ninety percent for that property owner. If a taxpayer disagrees with their value, what what can they do? So there's a, there's a five-stage, five-stage appeal process that that we manage here in the office. Uh, the first is the informal review, and that's where a taxpayer reaches out to us. Um, and said, look, my property can't be worth this much. I need to know what you did, or they may find that we have some information that's not accurate. If that's the case, we want them to call us. Ninety-five percent of our property appeal, property tax appeals are settled at this informal review level. Uh, from that point, if there's no agreement met or come to, the the taxpayer can appeal to the Board of Equalization Review. That is a local board appointed by the, uh, county, county commissioners. Um, they're independent of the county commissioners, um, under the, under the setup of Union County. That that from the Board of Equalization Review, if the board sides with the taxpayer, um, that is the final stop. If the board sides with the county, the taxpayer has the, um, authority to appeal and the ability to appeal to the property tax commissioner rally. You do not need an attorney to represent yourself to to represent you at either one of those levels. Taxpayers can represent themselves, and most of the time they do. Um, and the property tax commission, that is the last step for a evaluation decision. Um, if it's a legal argument regarding law or procedure, it can name, either party can appeal to the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court if as necessary. Other tax relief programs that we have, um, that apply to residential homeowners, um, you have your elderly and disabled requirement, which gives a fifty, a twenty-five thousand dollar or fifty percent reduction in the taxable value of property. Um, there are age and income requirements as well as ownership that have to be met. The the maximum income for this benefit for twenty twenty is thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. There's also disabled veterans for qualified owners. Um, they have to be declared a hundred percent disabled by the Veterans Administration. That is a forty-five thousand dollar exclusion from value. You also have a circuit breaker program, um, that is more of a tax deferment. And we don't, so we don't have a lot of people take advantage of this. It expands, it's similar to the elderly and and disabled exclusion, but it is a deferment and not an exclusion. It's a limit, the income window increases and the taxes that are deferred become a liability on the on the property, I mean, any subsequent owners to the person that qualified. So how have we been getting this same information now? We heard me reference earlier, I think this is our fourteenth presentation, um, in the last few weeks. Um, so that that's a big way that we're doing this. We're meeting with every municipality. Um, we also have a dedicated twenty twenty-one reappraisal webpage, and I would welcome the town. They feel free to link your site to that. There's a lot of useful information there. A lot of F A Qs, um, regarding the process. And also some tools to to assist taxpayers in filing their appeals if they need to. We've launched an electronic um, online appeal form, um, that is very easy to use. And we've also got a comparable sales database where if you put your property in, it will show you your value that's been established and all the sales in your neighborhood that were used to develop that value. And you can print out a sales comparison sheet and submit that with your appeal. We're also utilizing local media outlets, social media, and meeting with various communities, civic and faith-based, faith, faith-based groups, um, as we go through this process. Our goal is to let, is to get as much information out as possible so that everybody is aware of this. Um, I don't think it's a secret anymore. It's been being talked about for a couple of months now. Um, and and it's just an ongoing process of us continuing to communicate with the public. This will show you just a snapshot of what the county's tax base looks like. Um, our total estimated tax base with all categories of property for twenty twenty was twenty-seven point eight billion. Um, that is a three percent growth, which has been our annual growth rate since twenty fourteen. Our real estate and personal property and motor vehicle tax base has continued to grow consistently at three percent per year. And you'll see some more informations regarding the growth in the county, uh, specifically here in a few slides. Another graphical representation here shows that we are heavily residential. Um, that's not a secret to anyone. The county as a whole is seventy-three percent residential, ten percent commercial industrial. When you carve out just the real estate components of the tax base, it's more like eighty-eight percent to twelve percent. Uh, so there is a significant, uh, gap there as we all know. We're adding about seventeen hundred new parcels per year, um, in the county, and that's where land's being sold, subdivisions coming online, um, being and being planted out. Um, residential growth, we're adding about seventeen, eighteen hundred homes per year. So it's as, and that that is a yearly average for the past seven years. If you go back and look at the early two thousands, I think two thousand and four to two thousand and six, we were between four and six thousand homes per year. So while we are still growing consistently, it's not that ve- very rapid period of growth that we experienced in the early two thousands. As far as sales data, you heard me reference thirty-four thousand qualified sales to help us build the data for this process. Um, we're averaging roughly sixty-three hundred sales per year that are qualified arms-length transactions that we can use to to extract that valuation from. Commercial industrial growth, um, the county's bringing on about sixty different, sixty new parcels per year. That slowed quite a bit in twenty twenty. Um, but prior to that, it was, it was even with the slow growth in twenty twenty, um, it it was still consistent in that neighborhood. This is just a graphical representation on the next two slides of the sales ratio history in Union County. This goes back to nineteen eighty-six. Um, a, a increases like we're talking about are not unheard of. Um, in nineteen ninety-two reappraisal, we had a forty percent increase in property values. Um, and the two thousand reappraisal, another thirty percent, as you can see on the lines here, the the green boxes of the year of a reappraisal, the yellow is the year before and the and the sales ratio for that year, I'm sorry, the orange. You can see in two thousand and four, two thousand and eight, you heard me reference a shorter reappraisal cycle. Uh, the the jumps were not as significant. You had twelve percent in nine, it was fourteen, see twelve percent one year and nine percent, uh, the first year. So that was more manageable and not as significant. Then you come up here, we all know what happened in two thousand and nine. Uh, we had a reappraisal in two thousand and eight, then the the market went south. We actually inverted the sales ratio line and we went to almost a hundred and twenty percent of market. Um, which is why in two thousand and twelve, we triggered the same statute and and had to do a reappraisal within three years, which was twenty fifteen, which is where we're building off of today. And then again, this just same timeline here, just taking it further out into twenty twenty. Um, you can see that our, from, from the last reappraisal in twenty fifteen, our sales ratios continue to decline to where at the end of twenty twenty, we are at sixty-nine percent. In conclusion, um, I'll, I'll go over this slide again, reiterate a couple of points, and I'll share some additional actual real numbers with you. Um, our three primary things are transparency, fairness and equity. I mean, that that is what we, that is our mantra, and that is what we strive to achieve with the taxpayers in Union County. We're going to treat everybody fairly. Everything we do is open to the public. We are not trying to hide anything from anybody. All of our records are open. So if you have any questions about anything, contact our office. We'll answer every question to the best of our ability. We believe in a customer-focused process. We think this is a pri- a partnership with the taxpayer. Like I said before, if something is wrong, let us know so we can fix it. We want your property to be assessed fairly and compared, comparing to your neighbors in your community. Our public information campaign is is has been extensive, and we're also utilizing the technology for the online appeals process. As to, and I'm going to end sharing my screen here and pull up another form. Bear with me one second. As to the, um, actual numbers with the, for the reappraisal, so I'll give you the county first and then then we'll reference the town of Styling. So based on the twenty twenty, on the twenty fifteen valuation, the median home value was a hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. That median home value under the new new valuation is two hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So there's been quite a growth in the county, um, that that six to nine percent per year. Um, real estate market has has been driven even even in during the time of the pandemic when people think, well, it's not, the sales data in the real estate market is astronomical, right? I don't know if any of you are involved in real estate, but there is quite a bit of, um, activity still going on regardless of the of the pandemic situation. Um, that median rate per square foot is, uh, ninety-two dollars based on the twenty fifteen valuation. That's moving to a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents per per square foot. One second here. I gotta zoom in here so I can, so I can read this. As to the town, town of stylings, the town itself, and keep in mind, I know you bleed over into Mecklenburg County. Uh, this is strictly Union County properties. We have never, no bearing on the values that are on the Mecklenburg side of the line. So the, for the town of stylings, your total valuation is increasing by forty percent. Um, you've gone from one point three billion in real estate value to one point eight billion in real estate value. From that standpoint, um, we are strictly talking about market value at this point. We have not applied any of the qualifying properties tax relief just yet. That will be coming in the next couple of three weeks. We're working on that rapidly now. Uh, so that we can get the change of assessment notices out because those notices will be the assessed value, not just the market value. From a median standpoint, the town of stylings, the, um, median home value prior to the reappraisal was two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred dollars. That is moving to three hundred thousand five hundred and eighty five dollars, make sure I'm on the right line here, yes. Your median home square footage is two thousand seventy five square feet. And your median value per square foot went from one oh one to one forty four. Per square foot. With that, I will take any questions and. Rob and Phil are both available also for any, for any questions that I can't answer.
Could you give that last, the, the last few stats on the, the residential tax value in Stallings again?
Yes. Yes, I accidentally closed it out, hang on one second. Are you talking about the per square foot amount?
Per foot amount and the median value.
Okay, so for Stallings, your median value increased to, from two hundred and ten thousand two hundred dollars. To three hundred thousand five hundred and eighty five dollars. Your per square foot amount went from one oh one thirty. To one forty four eighty six.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let me add one more thing, your commercial valuation, I forgot that component. So your commercial valuation for the town increased thirteen and a half percent. That went from two hundred and seventy three million to three hundred and ten million. With your new median commercial value of five hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Mayor, I would just, I appreciate that, I just would ask maybe staff to send those numbers out to us in an email, I didn't. Have time to write them down.
We can do that, that's not a problem.
Alrighty, thank you, man.
Thank you, and if y'all have any questions, just let us know.
Alright, thank you very much.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
One question to you. I guess. I mean, this is good information, how, how does? I'll use my new guy card once again, how does that, I mean, translate to work effort for us? Do we have to reevaluate our, 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 our tax rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so as Van said, our revenue went up. What was it, Van, one point three billion to one point eight billion, is that the number I heard?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Forty percent, he said.
Yeah, forty percent, so our revenue has gone up forty percent, so. We'll, we'll look at what our revenue neutral rate is. And see how much revenue that brings in and then compare it to. Our, our last fiscal budget, how much revenue we need to meet expenditures and then, yeah, so yeah, it'll be a. An interesting. Budget time this year, since we're going through a revaluation.
If I can, if I can add one more thing, as, since you're talking about revenue neutral. That has to be taken into account on your entire tax base. But you get to exclude your normal average growth from that calculation. So if your normal average growth is three percent, you still get to experience that three percent growth. And, and, and revenue, if you will. Outside of the revenue neutral calculation, so if, and, and I'm sure Mister Sewell is very familiar with that process.
Yeah, but to answer your question, Stephen, yeah, we'll, we'll have to look at revenue and expenditures more closely this year.
Gotcha.
All right. The last time we had a tax decrease. Was I believe in oh eight is when the reevaluation came about. And, and we were able to lower the rate from, I think from twenty three to twenty one and a half.
Okay.
And so it's remained at twenty one and a half. For that period of time, am I right, Linda, is that, but sound right? Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's about right.
Yeah.
So we tried to get another tax decrease in twenty fifteen when the reevaluation came about, but we didn't get it. So it's, the tax rate stayed at twenty one and a half. Even though our revenue went up. Alright, any other questions for Van? Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, have a good night.
You too, appreciate you hanging on.
Not a problem.
Alrighty, next up is the open space improvements update from Lynn. And. She has some people with us.
And.
On the CRC.
Yeah, we have the C cog with us, if you all recall. I believe it was in September, late summer. Last summer, council had directed staff to. Do some research on our open space requirements. And there were some concerns that our new ordinance wasn't allowing us. To acquire as much open spaces desired. So the council directed us. Late last summer, early fall to contract with Centralina. Council of Governments. To rewrite Article twenty one of our development ordinance, which is the section that talks about our open space requirements. So tonight, Michelle Nance and Justin Monquino with the, with Centraline are here. Just to let you know, they did a similar presentation with the planning board. They are really in just a fact finding mission right now, they're looking to gather information on. You know, what the open space requirements are. And what it is that the council would like to see in the direction they would like to take the town in. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle and Justin.
And I'll go ahead and jump right in. Thank you Lynn for that, for that overview. That's very good submission of what we're going to talk about tonight and thank you council and mayor for, for having us here tonight. So if you go to the next slide, please. Alright, so here's just a simple overview of what we're going to, going to go through really quickly. We've talked to, talked to the staff and had some conversations internally and. Like Lynn mentioned, we've given the same presentation to the planning board. But we're at the point now where we need your input and direction on what the future of Stallings open space should look like. So to help get that discussion going, we're going to go through a brief overview of the importance of open space, your current regulations. I give just a quick, quick, quickly touch on the analysis process of how we're going to kind of be looking at. At your existing regulations and at peer communities. And we'll go through a quick slide on feedback that we received from the planning board and then open it up for your feedback. So next slide, please. So the importance of open space, and I have to say this seems like a really relevant discussion with several of the topics that have been discussed tonight. So I applaud your forethought in getting this review going. But open space has many benefits, just a few of which are listed here. Through various ways, it increases quality of life, promotes active living and economic competitiveness, enhances environmental quality. And in this new day and age we're in with COVID, it allows people a safer place to go outside of their homes. So next slide. So Stallings current regulations around open space are outlined in the comprehensive land use plan and focus on place making and creating destination points. They're addressed in the development ordinance and then in the parks, recreation and greenway master plan. It's great that you all already have those, those documents that start to, or that already address open space. And what we're going to do is hopefully refine those for you and make them. Bring them up to a standard that you want, want it to be in the future installments. So just an overview of what our analysis process looks like at a high level. We've started to review Stallings' current regulations and started to look at Stallings' existing. Existing work and, and comparing that work to, to peer communities to, to see what development really looks like in the region, what's the best practices are. Then we're going to recommend some changes and expanding, clarify the code a little bit. But all based off of the little bit of research that we do and then. The feedback that, that we get from, from you all and that we got from the planning board and that we get from my conversations with staff. So really just, you know, want to reiterate that we're, we're taking information from some communities and, and best practices. But we're really molding it to be stallings specific. Next slide. Some of the peer communities that we looked at or we're looking at that staff recommended are Davidson, Matthews, Mint Hill and Indian Trail. And again, we're just, we're looking at those for sort of standards in the region. And it's sort of a starting place to see if we have anything that matches up with the feedback that we're getting from you all on the planning board and staff. Next slide. Alright. So these are just some considerations to get you all thinking about open space. Some of the areas that we'll also be looking at installing current regulations and in the peer communities. But what are the types of open space and how are they defined, so are they active, passive, common, improved, undisturbed? How much open space is required and where do we want to see that shift based on their feedback? What are the standards by district? What can be counted towards total open space and then how are existing plans tied into the development requirements for open space? So we went through these same questions with the planning board and the next slide is going to be the feedback that we received from them. So these were the key takeaways from our meeting and. Overwhelmingly, we heard that the planning board was in favor of increasing the buffering requirements to add more space between developments. The feedback was that it would really make development feel less crowded, like it wasn't occurring on top of itself. We also had some great discussion in the same vein with that, that it would be a great opportunity to potentially incorporate something like a walking trail into a buffer area. To utilize it as both amenity and a buffer and potentially tied in with the parks and greenway plan that you all have. Some of the other topics were adding screening to visually separate homes from adjacent development. Whether that was through landscaping or berms, I have a picture here on the slide of a small berm with some landscaping on top. So that was something that we talked about. They also wanted to preserve active spaces, follow the Parks and Greenway Plan, make sure that was adhered to so that development or amenities and things were added. As they're spelled out in that plan. We also heard to, to look at requiring larger tracts of open space for amenities in communities. So not just the buffering on the outside of the communities, but the open space within the communities. And we had a discussion about unbuildable areas on properties. So things such as stream buffers, steeply sloped areas, et cetera, those are. Currently allowed to be counted as open space in the current ordinance. But we heard that this space should be preserved, but not necessarily counted as, as open space. So that's slide, please. So really, like I mentioned earlier, we want to open it up and, and get your feedback and see which direction we need to start taking our, our research. And these are some questions to kind of get the discussion going, but that's all I really had. I'll turn it back over to Lynn or Michelle if there's anything either of you wanted to add.
Yeah, Justin, thank you for that presentation. The planning board did a really good job and had, there was a lot of good discussion. I think what we're just looking for this evening and the cog is looking for is just if you all, you know, have any further input for them. The next phase is they'll begin. Putting together a draft that they can bring back, back, back to you all and the planning board for review. So I think at this time, if you just, they're just looking for any input you might have of anything additional you might like them to look at or include.
Why don't we do this, Lynn, why don't everybody, you know, think about it for a couple of days and get back to you by Friday?
Okay.
Yeah, would you mind sending that out and maybe a list of questions to kind of promote some thought?
We can do that, not a problem.
Thank you.
Is Friday enough time, council? To provide some feedback?
Yeah, for me it is.
Okay. I'll let you speak for the whole board.
Gladly, okay guys, this is it, Friday.
Friday, that's it. Alrighty, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
And next up is the, Marcia, thank you for hanging on.
No problem. Okay, I, I hope that everyone was able to look in their email today. I had inadvertently sent the November report that got put into the agenda packet. But I did send out the December report today to everyone. If you didn't get it, I apologize that I will be going through it tonight. And if you hadn't had a chance to look at it, this, this is actually in the, in your email. Alright, next slide. We are really starting to see the tax revenue coming in, which changes, you know, when you first start out the fiscal year. You're spending a lot more than you're taking in, so it's, it gets a little lopsided at first. But then, once your revenues start coming in from taxes in November and December. Things start being, it's looking very good and when you're comparing to budget. You can see the graph there, the blue line represents last year of twenty twenty. The green line is the, the actual for twenty twenty one, red line is the budget. We are a hundred and, about a hundred and four thousand dollars over. We collected four point one six six million so far this year. Last year, we had four point zero six two million, so we're a hundred and four thousand dollars above last fiscal year. Mainly in the areas of the grant income, we had fifty thousand and two hundred and twenty three thousand. For the North Carolina Rural Economic Development Grant and the CARES relief grant and that's respectively. Looking at compared to budget, we're actually a little bit below. And I think that's just timing of when the, yeah, the warms taxes come in. They're budgeted. Months to months, but this year I'm going to actually change that a little bit because we really don't receive any payments for the first couple of months. And I'll space that out a little bit more evenly so that the month budget would trend more to the actuals. But that's the reason there's a little bit of a difference there, it's mainly that one month lag. Next slide. You can see here, the general fund revenue, the ones that are, are really. The big ones there would be your adjuvant tax. We've collected two point, about two point four million compared to two point three last year. And then the sales in use. The sales in use tax is a very interesting number, we actually decreased our budget last year. To about, I think it was at one point three million, three million oh one was what we collected. And this year's revenue in the budget was actually less, but we're going to, considering that. That, that's through December, that there's two, actually, it only represents collections. Only four months worth of collections. So when you look at it that, with that respect. We will definitely, we may, we could very well hit three times that amount, which is one point five million compared to the one point two. So in essence, most of our revenue is coming from those two lines. Then on the power bill line, we did get both of our payments in for the year, they come in September and December. And we collected three hundred and eighty nine thousand compared to our budget. So we're slightly below budget on that line by eleven thousand. I think we can make it up very easily on one of the other revenues. I'm not worried about meeting our revenue budget in total. Franchise and utility tax, we've collected two of four payments. We have a hundred and eight, or eight hundred and two thousand budgeted. We've collected three hundred and ninety nine thousand, which is two payments and we have two left through the end of the year. So we're very close to budget on that. And then you can see that grant revenue towards the end there, two hundred and seventy three thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars. That was mainly what we talked about and, and obviously we did not have anything in the budget for that. So looking at the overall general fund, the pink line. At the bottom for the totals, not very bottom, but three lines up from the bottom. Six point nine millions are total budget, we've collected sixty point three percent of that total with the collections of four point one six six million. And it is higher than last year. The fund balance appropriations, it's not really a collection, it's more of a transfer into the, into the budget from, from fund balance. Even though it's an accounting revenue, it's really not collections. So I usually try and focus on that pink line. Any questions on revenues? Okay, next slide. General fund expenditures, you can see overall, the general fund is trending below budget, which is a good thing. It, but it's actually below by almost eight hundred thousand dollars. And it's really the COVID virus spending versus, you know, everyone being in the office and whatnot. We've, I mean, overall, it's just every department isn't spending quite as much. The Park and Recs Department specifically is affected by this with some of the programs in our. the events that we usually carry have been canceled or changed in some other way that is less expensive to the town. So we are saving some money there. But if you look at 2020 actuals, we're about tracking to those with only a variance of $82,000. And I can show what that difference is because what I just said about less spending compared to budgets and tracking last year, it's mainly the capital expenditures that that we had in the beginning of this year and didn't have them in in last year. Next slide, please. General government, if you think that we are half of the half the years over, 50% of the budget spent would be my mark there off to the right that I would look at for any major variances to see if, you know, anything is is about going over budget for the year. But in general government, they've they've spent a total of 57.1%, and that's they spent 681,000 compared to 579,000 from last year. But if you look at the last line there, the capital outlay line, that is the major reason for this. If we take that off of there, we would be actually below what we spent in prior year. And that is the town hall second floor renovations. They are capital expenditure that was not budgeted. The 23,000 there is not for that. It's it's actually for some equipment purchases in the department. But that 146,725, we we need to do a budget amendment, and we will be addressing that later on in this presentation. Public safety, you can see that there's 1.15 million that's spent year to date. And that represents 42.8% of their total budget, so they are below that 50% threshold compared to 1.117 million last year. And really, each of those lines, the only one that goes over slightly is on the other category, which is the interest or insurance expense, which is paid 100% at the beginning of the year. And then the last line, capital purchases, the body cameras were purchased. The cars, two of the cars were actually delivered in January, and you will see those on the next monthly report where they've actually been paid for, and and you'll see that expense on that line. Next slide, please. The next report will be on transportation. They've only spent 18.8% of their budget, and if you look to the left in the budget lines, there's $75,000 there for paving and sidewalks and signage. None of that has spent year to date, as well as Powell bill for the road repairs for this year. None of that has been spent. So that's really the major reason why there there's so low. The other numbers are pretty much at the halfway mark on the outside services and utilities as well as wages and fringe benefits. They have spent 147,000 year to date. Well, I should say year to date in this fiscal year. Public Works has spent 105,565 compared to 169,600 last year. That is 30, about 35% of their budget, total budget for the year. Their lines look good. The only overage we have on them is in the outside services. When I say overage, greater than the 50%. That is on the outside services line, representing the annual inspections that for elevators and sprinklers and alarm systems that are done at the beginning of this year. Dollar wise, it really isn't a lot of money for for that line item. It's 12,000, but that's why that one number is is slightly higher and above that 50% mark. Next slide, please. Planning and zoning, you can see that they've spent 160,680 of their budget compared to 143,427 from prior year. That's about 47% of their total budget. The one line that stands out on this, I'm going to point to outside services. That represents legal fees and and some work done for software licensing and Union County Forester. The big thing on this of that 42,031,500 is their legal fees related to development agreements and the adjustment board of adjustment meetings. And those actually, we're going to be talking a little bit later. I think it's, we can estimate now estimate with 50% of the year being in what we will need through the end of the year. And I am proposing a budget amendment for that line item specifically. Park and Rec, you can see they've spent 190,000 compared to spending 325,000 last year. That big, I mean, truly, that that line item is really mainly the the events and advertising. Year to date, we've spent 8,000. In years past, we've spent there's been quite a lot of spending. I mean, they're normally $30,000 or so is spent on the Sillings Fest in particular, which we did not have. So that's the big ticket item for the savings in in that department. Next slide, please. Sanitation is tracking pretty much what it is from last year, slightly above only $1,000. And that's they are still at 57% of their total budget. We think we're fine on that line item. And then the debt service, that only represents that represents the interest only. And we will be making the principal payment here coming in a few months, actually, next month. It'll be 200, a little over 231,800, I believe. And that'll be done, you know, according to our terms of our agreement with the bank. So total expenditures, I'm going to focus on that for the total for all departments. They've spent 40% of the total budget, which is almost $3 million, 2,009,590 compared to 3,41,000 from prior year. The other line items, Potter Road, we haven't, we haven't had many expenditures. We haven't had any this fiscal year, very little last year, and it's kind of put on hold at this point. And then there's the Capital Project Fund. We had some wiring costs that carried over into this fiscal year. I'm actually proposing a budget amendment for $6,000 to cover those costs that we have it in that. We have to, even though it's a small amount, because that fund has no budget in it for this year, we have to budget something to cover those expenses. And I think that's, there's any, do I have any questions on the expenditures? Next, we have stormwater, I think, stormwater fund. Revenue wise, we have 288,000 that has come in this year. It represents 56% of the total budget. I don't think that's going to be any problem collecting the remaining amount. We're about the same percentage on the adwaren on the general fund side. The thing that's very different, we're really below on expenditures for stormwater. You can see it's 177,000 compared to 513,000 from prior year. And you can see that on two line items here, and that's the first being the repairs and outside services. It's really the stormwater repairs. We had quite a large expense for Wedgewood. It was about 140,000 from last year, making that number. If we took that away from last year's expenditure, would be around where we are this year. And then also the transfer from the general fund or transfer to the general fund. And that was actually for the Underground Water Detention Center and for the Newtown Hall and Public Works buildings. Any questions on stormwater? Next slide, please. So all in all, we are, we've gone from being in a negative position of, when I say negative, revenue less expense being negative, and now it's positive. Our total fund balance in the general fund has shifted from 10.7 million up 1.2 million to 11,933. And then in the stormwater fund, we've also done the same. It's gone up almost $111,000 from the beginning of the year, and it's now at 1,191. Next slide. Cash balances, general fund, we have about 12.3 million. Stormwater has slightly below 1,961,000. Sewer Fund has about $8,000. And in total, we have 13.2 million from all of the PNC and investment accounts. Next slide. Really, in summary, we're, you know, I have no doubt that collections have been, they haven't lagged. I know that we were slightly worried about how COVID may have affected collections for the year, and we're seeing that we're still getting our our taxes in, getting them in on time. Sales tax has been above, so all indications are that the town will exceed the budget, the revenue budget by the end of the year. Expenditures, we are actually below on that from prior fiscal year. 33.2% below budget through 1231. So I think we'll, you know, we're heading in the right direction for expenses. I don't see some huge pickup at some other point throughout this year. I think even if everyone gets vaccines and we start fully staffing the office, the end time in the office, it will, you know, it won't change those numbers to be anything. We wouldn't push us over budget. Cash balances are high at 3.3 or 13.2 million. We're in great shape for cash. We'll be able to easily make our payment that we owe for the principal for the BB and T note. And then lastly, based on current spend, that one there, I don't, it's it's while we could probably cover it by shifting budgets through from one department to another, I think it's better and cleaner for for us to just go ahead and budget additional funds to the departments that need them and then have savings in the in the end when, you know, when we can actually, they'll just go into fund balance at that point. So next slide, please. The unbudgeted items, which I mentioned, and I was asking for, that I I'm requesting amendments for mainly are the Town Hall renovations. We had about $140,000 on the spend so far. There is one more invoice that will be paid this month to the builder. We were holding out on some of the punch list items for the second floor renovations. They have been completed, and we will be paying that that out. So the difference between, and it's truly a carryover from last year. We thought we would be able to get the renovations done before year end, but we did not. So that is a carryover. The funds that were set aside in last year's budget got put into fund balance, and they're just being really being used, pulled out of fund balance if we make this amendment to pay for them. The Newtown Hall wiring, that that was $6,000. Like, you know, we have to put funds over there in order to be able to cover those expenditures in that in that fund. It's Fund 42, and it's the Capital Project Fund. So we'll put those those 6,000 to cover those expenses there. The Victory Greenway Design, the NCDOT Crosswalk Review, there's a fee for that of 6,000. I do have that in the in the request as well, bumping up Park and Recs budget. And then we also have the Open Space Contract for Centralina and Economic Development, which we heard about this evening. There's a fee of 6,000, which was not budgeted, as well as legal expenses. In the original budget, we have $24,000, and we spent $31,530 to date. I'm requesting that we actually raise the budget an additional 30, $30,000, I believe. I can look at that, sorry.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm it's 38,000. Yeah, it's the 38,000 that's there. So those are actually, I'm trying to clean this this sheet up so that we have our all of our expenses covered for through the remainder of the year and take care of these these items. I see maybe at the end of the year, we'll have a few others, but I I think at this point, this would clean up a lot of expenditures that council approved, and we can, you know, get them in there, and they their departments won't look like they're spending over budget once I make these amendments and push them through. Okay, next slide, please.
Yeah, on this slide right here, Alex, can we make sure that y'all keep an eye on the CRC on that open space contract of $6,000? And make sure we're getting the hours that justify $6,000? It just seems to be a bit much. Same, you know, same thing I thought about the Greenway design of $6,000. You know, I just think these other governmental governmental agencies are a little bit too expensive. So if we can keep an eye on that $6,000 in the hours they're spending on it and get, you know, bang for our buck, I would appreciate.
Thank you, man. We'll we'll look at the contract, make sure they're complying.
Any other questions? Next slide.
Did you explain the legal expenses?
Pardon me?
What was that, David?
On the previous slide, Marcia, you talked about, there we go, legal expenses. Is that extra high, higher than what we budgeted up? Did you explain that and I missed it or what?
It is. It's mainly, we're using a different attorney right now, and the fees are higher per hour. We've had a number of costs related to the stents and farms the the development, and all those meetings and things are attended by the attorney as well as any board of adjustment meetings, which last couple of hours. And Lynn may, Lynn, do you want to add anything to that?
The board of adjustment hours out of whack.
No, I mean, it's, I don't think there, I I think most of the, you know, board of adjustment hours, I believe there's about of that money, maybe $8,000 spent on that. And we're looking to get to 38,000. We're taking our existing budget at 24 and the estimated cost of 62. And if you subtract those two, we get to 38,000. And so, but we have spent 31,532 to date.
And we still have, what, two open items that the board of adjustments have to meet on? And then whatever other economic development or development projects that come through the rest of the year. So yeah. It's going to add up.
It, we've had a lot of activity, yes.
Yeah, the these development agreements are just getting, you know, the amount of time that we we thought there was going to be expedite the process, but there's been the opposite. It's just costing us a lot of money.
Do we need to look at the development fees? Or figure out a way to get this these expenses covered a little bit better?
Yes, that's a good point, David.
Didn't we do that, Lynn or Marcia, a year or two? Maybe three years ago?
I think it was two years ago.
Yeah, we've gone up on the fees, but we need to go up again.
I believe at this point, $6,250 or something.
Is there, maybe we need to have a sliding scale or something? And I know, I think the the Board of Appeals is looking at how to contain that open ended possibility of like, there's one in particular going right now. It's going on and on and on and on and on. And we got to figure out a way to make sure that comes to a conclusion and as well as not get into that. And we gotta figure out a way to make sure that comes to a conclusion and as well as not get into that, that cycle again with, um, it goes on.
Yeah.
For those who probably know which case I'm talking about, but it's kind of come to a conclusion. Cause every time that costs us X dollars a night.
All right, anything else? Is that the last slide there, uh, your summary?
Uh, it's really the summary and, and the, uh, budget amendments that we're requesting. I have those if we want to move forward with those, um.
Yep. Do you have them in your, uh, your other form that you usually?
I do. I think Erin has those, they're in the agenda packet.
Yeah.
She's gonna pull them up, I think, hopefully. Erin, are you there? I can, I can try and pull them up, let's see. If you want to share the screen, I can get to them.
Mayor, I have the budget amendments here and the thing, I, I don't have an issue with, um, with any of them. If you'd like me to read them.
There we go. All righty. So the first one is the budget amendment number four, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar transfer. Uh, and this was for capital outlay of the, uh, what was it again, Marcia?
The second floor renovations at town hall.
All right, can I get a motion on this, please?
I'll make a motion to approve budget ordinance four.
All right, motion by Brad to approve, can I get a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Martin. Uh, I think we'll just do a voice vote on this, cause these are, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? All right, the ayes have it, that's unanimous.
Mayor, if I may, um, it's important for this vote, uh, given it's a remote meeting, that the vote be a roll call.
Okay, thank you. All right, Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
Uh, Erin is, uh, frozen out right now, so I'm gonna go through the districts, uh, if you don't mind, Mayor, myself.
You want me to do it and save your voice?
Thank you for, mercy on me, that would be great.
All right, all right, District One, Martin?
Aye.
Uh, District Two, Shaw?
Aye.
Uh, District Three, Paxton?
Aye.
District, District Four, Grooms?
Aye.
District Five, Ayers?
Aye.
District Six, Richardson?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, all right, let's go to number five.
Move approval for budget ordinance number five related to Newtown Hall and Public Works Building.
All right, motion to, motion to approve by Mr. Richardson, second by,
I'll second.
Second by Heather Grooms, uh, to approve a, uh, budget amendment number five. So District One, Martin?
Aye.
District Two, Shaw?
Aye.
District Three, Paxton?
Aye.
District Three, Grooms?
Aye.
District Five, uh, Ayers?
Aye.
District Six, Richardson?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, passed unanimously.
Mayor, make a motion to approve budget ordinance six. This is related to Economic Development Department for Legal Services. And I think we also have, this is for the, uh, Department of Transportation Services for six thousand dollars.
Right, all right, motion by Mr. Richardson, second by,
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Paxton, uh, to approve, uh, mini-budget ordinance number six. Uh, District One, Martin?
Aye.
District Shaw?
Aye.
District Three, Paxton?
Aye.
District Three, Grooms?
Aye.
District Four, Grooms, excuse me, yep. District Five, Ayers?
Aye.
District Six, Richardson?
Aye.
All right, ayes have it, passes unanimously, all right, thank you, Brad. All right, is that it, Marcia?
Yes, it is, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, Cookie Monster, we're gonna put you off.
Sounds good, thank you.
I don't think anybody can stand listening to you another minute. All right, let's skip, we'll, uh, table that for the next meeting. And, uh, number nine, the scorecard, so number ten, the purchasing of three twenty-five Stallings Road, so Linda Paxton.
I think Alex was gonna key this up. Alex, do you want to say anything by way of introduction?
Uh, sure, happy to, um, so I, I think where we left this is the council had approved, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Paxton to represent the town, uh, pro, pro bono, meaning no charge. Uh, the, uh, the estimate savings was probably somewhere between seven to ten thousand dollars, around that range. So thank you to Mayor Pro Tim Paxton for, um, representing us on this at no charge. Uh, can I turn it over to you?
Yes, I'll, I'll take it from here.
Thank you.
Just to bring the council up to date, we do have a fully executed contract for the purchase of the property at three twenty-five Stallings Road. And we have in the contract a due diligence period during which time we can, um, do any inspections or surveys or, um, exploration of the property to satisfy ourselves that we do in fact want to purchase this property. And, um, Alex and I did make a site visit together last Friday because I thought it would be good for somebody to have eyes on this property other than me. And we want council to have an opportunity to have input on some of these decisions. Um, it is an older home, it does have likely underneath some of the fresh paint, some lead-based paint, because it was actually constructed in nineteen sixty-three. Um, but, and I think Mr. Martin raised a question of asbestos, but we will, um, either be selling this property, selling the house, or, um, demolishing the property. So my recommendation would be that we not do any of those inspections because they will have expense associated with them. And I don't think anything we would discover would dissuade us from purchasing the property. But, um, wanted council to have a chance to weigh in on that. And we can do these kind of one by one if you'd like. Anybody want to comment on those inspections?
I agree with you, if we're sell, if we're selling it, uh, or demolishing it, no, no sense to, the only one I would recommend, well, you want to do them one by one, I'll wait.
Yeah, uh, we did talk too about the possibility of doing some soil borings because we know the soil is likely bad there. It was bad at the, uh, Newtown Hall, it was bad at the park, um, site across the street. But Alex acquired some estimates on that and it probably would run in the neighborhood of six thousand dollars. Um, and again, I think both Alex and I would recommend that we not pursue soil boring on the site. Wanted to see what council thinking is in that regard.
Concur.
Yeah, with, with both boring and asbestos, if, if we're just gonna tear it down, we're gonna, I think it's gonna, we're gonna have the opportunity to go back and adjust the price of the property, so, uh, it kind of is what it is.
Right, and then the final thing I, I thought we would consider as a board is whether or not we want to do survey of the property. Um, the corners on the, um, Stallings Road site are marked, but there is a little bit of a zigzag because you know this is actually two lots that we're getting here. The house, the house with the lot, I mean, the lot with the house is, um, point eight-five acres. And then there is an additional, what they refer to as a well lot, but it's, um, just a, kind of a triangular piece that connects over to Community Park Drive, and that's, uh, two tenths of an acre. But the lines are not exactly parallel. Um, and then there's no marking of the corners on Community Park Drive. So we thought after looking at it again, uh, and there's also the possibility that there's a fence encroaching on the flow property that we might want to get a survey. And, um, surveys typically for lots are about three hundred and fifty dollars, but with this having two parcels, we thought probably it might run as much as five or five twenty-five. But I would recommend that we get a survey of the property.
I agree. Especially after what happened with it, the, uh, the new building.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we won't use that surveyor most likely if we would do proceed with that. And then the final thing we wanted to bring to your attention is, um, the house itself is in excellent condition. It's, uh, just under twelve hundred square feet. And as I said, it was built in nineteen sixty-three, but it's fresh and attractive. And I think, um, we probably could sell the structure on govdeals.com. And there are companies that move houses. Um, the cost to move it is, depends a lot on how far you're taking it and what the route is. But, um, I think we should at least try to sell the property because it is in good condition. It could be relocated and somebody could buy it for, say, ten thousand dollars and spend another ten to move it and have a nice home. So, um, I don't know what your, um, idea is about that, but if that's something you'd like to pursue, I think we can certainly do that as well.
I think we should.
Agree.
As long as there's, as long as there's no risk to the town, yep.
Well, I mean, sometimes people just give those houses away for moving them. But I think, um, it'd be better to have some financial expense to it so that somebody doesn't kind of come in and start to move it and then change their minds and leave us with a, a problem that we wouldn't have otherwise. So I guess we will consider that as well. Um, and then the final thing is, uh, we will, Alex did consult with Melanie on this and we will need to probably have, um, a public hearing on this. And even though we did not do that with other properties we've purchased, I think the intent with this one is to possibly at some future time enter into a public-private partnership for some redevelopment of this site and the adjoining site. So Melanie suggested we would need to hold a public hearing to, um, authorize the execution of the closing documents. So we will do that probably, um, sometime late March or early April, cause it's set to close, um, the end of April. Any other thoughts or feedback you want to give staff or me on this purchase agreement?
Now, Alex and I talked about, uh, it says there in the motion to authorize the town manager to execute the closing documents. Do we need to do that tonight?
No, sir.
Yeah, I thought that's what you said, so I just want to, we'll hold off on that.
Yes, sir, please. And one, I'll mention just as a piece of information, the cost to demo this house and hazard mitigation, it's probably gonna be around sixteen thousand bucks in the future. So just as an FYI, thank you.
Another reason to sell it. Or at least try.
All right, well, Linda, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All righty, any other comments? All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved, second.
All right, that's unanimous, all right, so, uh, thank y'all for your, your, uh, work tonight.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, y'all.
Good night.
All right.
Feel better, Alex?